Table. Submit the form to the city clerk before the item begins. When it's your turn, the city clerk will call your name and invite you to the podium. Speakers generally have three minutes, unless the presiding officer, usually the mayor, changes that time. Reasonable accommodations. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, if you are a person with a disability and you need a disability-related modification or accommodation to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk's office at (916) 461-6035, (916) 355-7328, fax, or city clerk department@folsom.ca.us. Requests must be made as early as possible and at least two full business days before the start of the meeting. How to watch. The City of Folsom provides three ways to watch a city council meeting. In person online on TV. One. City Council meetings take place at City Hall, 50 Natoma Street. Watch the live stream and replay past meetings on the city website. Watch live and replays of meetings on SAC Metro Cable TV, Channel 14. More information about city council meetings is available at the end of this agenda. City Council Regular Meeting End. Joint City Council/Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Meeting Folsom City Hall City Council Chambers, First Floor. 50 Natoma Street, Folsom, California, 95630 www.folsom.ca.us. Tuesday, March 25, 2025, 6:30pm. Sarah Aquino, Mayor. Mike Koslowski, Councilmember Barbara Leary, Councilmember Justin Rathel, Vice Mayor Anna Rohrbau, Councilmember. Agenda. Call to Order Roll Call. Councilmembers: Leary, Rathel, Rohrbau, Koslowski, Aquino. The city council has adopted a policy that no new item will begin after 10:30pm. Therefore, if you are here for an item that has not been heard by 10:30pm, you may leave, as the item will be continued to a future council meeting. Pledge of Allegiance Agenda Update. Business from the floor. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Folsom City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are generally limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Public Hearing. I Resolution Number 11,341A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom declaring results of the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025 to 1 ballot proceeding, approving the final engineer's report, confirming the diagram and assessments, and ordering the levying of assessments for the maintenance and servicing of improvements within said district. Convene Joint Meeting. Roll Call. Council/Board Members: Leary, Rathel, Rohrbau, Koslowski, Aquino. Public Hearing. Two Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number 23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number 7 Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series 2025. I Resolution Number 11,344A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom authorizing the issuance of the City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number 23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number 7 Special Tax Bonds, Series 2025, the execution of an indenture providing therefore, authorizing the execution of a local obligation purchase contract, and authorizing necessary actions and the execution of other documents in connection therewith. Two Resolution No. 014 Folsom Ranch FA A Resolution of the Governing Board of the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of not-to-exceed $12 million aggregate principal amount of City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number 23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number 7 Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series 2025, approving the form and substance of a trust agreement, authorizing modifications thereof and execution and delivery as modified, approving a preliminary official statement, authorizing changes thereto and execution and delivery of an official statement to be derived therefrom, approving a local obligation purchase contract, and a bond purchase contract and execution and delivery of each, and authorizing related actions necessary to implement the proposed financing. Adjournment. Reconvene City Council Meeting Scheduled Presentations. Three City Managers Fiscal Year 2024 to 25 Second Quarter Financial Report, Continued from March 11, 2025. Consent Calendar. Items appearing on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by one motion. Councilmembers may pull an item for discussion. Four Approval of February 25, 2025 Special and Regular Meeting Minutes. Five Approval of February 28, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes. Six Approval of March 11, 2025 Special, Regular, and Joint Meeting Minutes. Seven Resolution Number 11,335A Resolution directing the Finance Director to make a transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund for the amount in excess of the General Fund Reserve, Continued from March 11, 2025. Eight Resolution Number 11,339A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with S&amp;S Fence Company Incorporated for the replacement of the existing wrought iron fence at the Natoma Sluice Digging Site and use of General Fund, Fund 010, Contingency Budget. Nine Resolution Number 11,340A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with KSI and Aquafinity Company for the replacement of the sand filters at the Steve Miklos Aquatics Center and use of General of Fund, Fund 010, Contingency Budget. Ten Resolution Number 11,342A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number 4 to the Agreement, Contract No. 173 to 2120-031, with Hydroscience Engineers, Inc. for Design Services for the Ashland Water Rehabilitation Project Number 1, Project WA 2101, An Appropriation of Funds. Eleven Resolution Number 11,343A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number 2 to the Agreement, Contract No. 173 to 2123-034, with West Yost and Associates, Inc. for Construction Management and Inspection Services for the Ashland Water Rehabilitation Project Number 1, WA 2101, An Appropriation of Funds. Twelve Resolution Number 11,345A Resolution of the City of Folsom authorizing the city's allocation of up to $810,000 in permanent local housing allocation, PLHA, funds received through the allocation agreement with Sacramento County to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento for the construction of the 10 affordable housing units for the Percy Fetter Street project and appropriation of funds. Thirteen Resolution Number 11,349A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a subdivision improvement agreement and accept offers of dedication for the Toll Brothers at Folsom Ranch Phase 2D subdivision, and approval of the final map for the Toll Brothers at Folsom Ranch Phase 2D subdivision. New Business. Fourteen Resolution Number 11,346A Resolution of the City of Folsom approving revisions to the repayment terms of an approved affordable housing loan in the amount of $2,700,000 from the city's housing fund to Pacific West Communities, Inc., for the construction of 52 affordable housing units at the Harrington Grove Multifamily Affordable Housing Development. Fifteen 2024 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report. City Manager Reports Council Comments Adjournment. Notice: Members of the public are entitled to directly address the city council concerning any item that is described in the notice of this meeting, before or during consideration of that item. If you wish to address council on an issue, which is on this agenda, please complete a blue speaker request card, and deliver it to a staff member at the table on the left side of the council chambers prior to discussion of the item. When your name is called, stand to be recognized by the mayor and then proceed to the podium. If you wish to address the city council on any other item of interest to the public, when the mayor asks if there is any business from the floor, follow the same procedure described above. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Notice Regarding Challenges to Decisions Pursuant to All Applicable Laws and Regulations, including without limitation, California Government Code Section 65,009 and/or California Public Resources Code Section 21,177, if you wish to challenge in court any of the above decisions regarding planning, zoning and/ or environmental decisions, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, s, described in this notice/agenda, or in written correspondence delivered to the city ed, or prior to, the public hearing. As Presiding Officer, the mayor has the authority to preserve order at all city council meetings, to remove or cause the removal of any person from any such meeting for disorderly conduct, or for making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, using profanity, or becoming boisterous, threatening or personally abusive while addressing said council, and to enforce the rules of the council. Persons interested in proposing an item for the city council agenda should contact a member of the city council. This meeting of the city council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cablecast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and DirecTV Uverse Cable System, and will be shown in its entirety on the Friday and Saturday following the meeting, both at 9am. The recording will also be video streamed at Metro 14 Live dot SACC County dot government. The city does not control scheduling of this telecast and persons interested in watching the televised meeting should confirm this schedule with Metro Cable TV, Channel 14. The City of Folsom provides live and archived webcasts of regular city council meetings. The webcasts can be found on the online services page of the city's website www.folsom.ca.us. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, if you are a person with a disability and you need a disability-related modification or accommodation to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk's office at (916) 461-6035, (916) 355-7328, fax, or city clerk department@folsom.ca.us. Requests must be made as early as possible and at least two full business days before the start of the meeting. Any documents produced by the city and distributed to the city council regarding any item on this agenda will be made available at the city clerk's counter at City Hall located at 50 Natoma Street, Folsom, California and at the Folsom Public Library located at 411 Stafford Street, Folsom, California during normal business hours. This page is intentionally left blank to facilitate double-sided printing and minimize paper use. Folsom City Council. Staff Report. Meeting Date. March 25, 2025. Agenda Section. Public Hearing. Subject. Resolution No. 11341A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom declaring results of the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025 to 1 ballot proceeding, approving the final engineer's report, confirming the diagram and assessments, and ordering the levying of assessments for the maintenance and servicing of improvements within said district. From. Parks and Recreation Department. Recommendation I City Council Action. Staff recommends the city council conduct a public hearing to receive testimony and to allow for the submission of ballots before the close of the public hearing. Staff recommends following the close of the public hearing, the item be continued to the end of the meeting while the city clerk canvases the ballots. If the majority of the votes as weighted by assessment amount in accordance with assessment law are in favor of the proposed district, staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution Number 11,341A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom declaring results of the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025 to 1 ballot proceeding, approving the final engineer's report, confirming the diagram and assessments, and ordering the levying of assessments for the maintenance and servicing of improvements within said district. If the majority of the votes as weighted by assessment amount in accordance with assessment law are opposed to the proposed district, the city council shall not adopt the resolution. Background/Issue. One. On January 14, 2025, the city council approved Resolution Number 11,321A Resolution initiating proceedings for the formation of a landscaping and lighting assessment district to be known as the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025 to 1. On January 28, 2025, the city council approved Resolution Number 11,323A Resolution approving the preliminary engineer's report, declaring the intention to order the formation of the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025 to 1, to levy and collect assessments, to provide notice of public hearing and direct the mailing of assessment ballots within the proposed district in the City of Folsom. Pursuant to Government Code Section 53,753, ballots were mailed to all current property owners within the proposed district. Along with the ballot, the property owners received a postcard describing the purpose of the new district. For fiscal year 2025 to 2026, the proposed Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025 to 1 annual assessment will be $78.32 per special benefit point as described in the final engineer's report as well as an escalator not to exceed 3% that would allow yearly adjustments if needed in the future. There are a total of 5,535.36 benefit points in the district. The assessment range is based on the benefit received by each parcel and the range of rates for a single-family home is between $185.47 and $360.15 with an average single-family home rate of $258.45 annually. Under the provisions of Proposition 218, a public hearing must be held on the levy of new assessments at least 45 days after notice of the proposed assessment was mailed to record owners of each parcel in the new district. The public hearing was set in Resolution Number 11,323 on January 28, 2025, and the notice of public hearing was mailed to record owners on February 6, 2025, and published in the Folsom Telegraph on March 14, 2025. The public hearing was set for March 25, 2025, at 6:30pm in the City Council Chambers, 50 Natoma Street, Folsom, California, 95630. At the public hearing, ballots will be counted and, in the absence of a majority protest of the votes as weighted by assessment amount in accordance with assessment law against the imposition of a new assessment, the city council may consider approving this resolution to approve the final engineer's report, form the district, and authorize the levy and collection of the new assessments. The proceeding for the formation of a new assessment district shall be abandoned if a majority protest exists. As part of the formation process, and in order to levy the annual assessment should the district be formed, an engineer's report must be prepared in accordance with the requirements of Articles EEID, Section 4 of the California Constitution, also known as Proposition 218, and Article 4 of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, Sections 22,565 through 22574 of the Streets and Highways Code. The attached final engineer's report for fiscal year 2025 to 2026, Attachment 2, is submitted for city council review and approval. Included within the report are the following. A Plans and Specifications for the Maintenance of the Improvements. B Estimate of the Cost of Maintaining the Improvements. Five. See Diagram of the Assessment District. D.Assessment of the Estimated Costs for Maintaining the Improvements. Policy/Rule. The city council is required to approve, or modify, and approve, the engineer's report as part of the formation process pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, Streets and Highways Code Section 22,586. The city council shall comply with the majority protest and hearing procedures pursuant to Section 22588 of the Streets and Highways Code. Analysis. The original Natoma Station Landscaping and Lighting District, District, was formed by Resolution Number 3024 on June 18, 1990, to maintain improvements within the district. These improvements include landscaping and associated improvements along Iron Point, Blue Ravine, Turnpike, Black Diamond, and Natoma Station, as well as the subdivision streetlights, landscape lighting, irrigation systems, open space, monument entry signage, sound walls, mini parks, and art. This district was formed prior to Proposition 218 and therefore does not have an escalator built into the annual rate. There are 1,272 single-family dwelling units within the district, and it is one of the older districts in the city. In addition, this district has not already gone through the Proposition 218 process to address the gap that exists from increased costs to maintain its intended level of service. The district maintains the aforementioned improvements along the frontages and medians of Floron Point, Blue Ravine, Turnpike, Black Diamond, and Natoma Station. In addition to maintaining these areas, the district is also responsible for servicing costs for irrigation water and electricity to the street and landscape lights. Revenue from the existing district assessment, approximately $I70,000 annually, is allocated yearly to maintain the district's features. The existing per-unit rate of $91.70 has not been increased since the district was established over 34 years ago. Approximately 37% of the budget currently covers scheduled and unscheduled landscape maintenance, 9% to streetlight maintenance and supplies, 23% to water and electricity, and 29% to incidental cost, non-landscape contract services, electrical repairs, vandalism response/repairs, hazard tree removal, sidewalk repair, yearly backflow testing, preparation of engineer's reports, publication/mailings, staff, overhead, and county auditor fee. Historically, expenses have exceeded revenues. The existing revenue from the collected assessments has been unable to fund the expected day-to-day unscheduled costs such as irrigation repairs and plant/ tree replacements, as well as not being able to set aside funds for life cycle costs in the district. As a result, when the current fiscal year closes on June 30, 2025, the district is projected to have a negative fund balance of $620,194. Expenses have exceeded revenues for several years which highlights the need for the additional assessment. Revenue versus expenditures. The primary objective of forming a new district to replace the existing district is to specifically provide the level of service originally intended, address deferred maintenance of the improvements within the district, plan for life cycle replacements and repairs for years into the future and provide for an annual inflationary adjustment as needed. Such deferred items include outdated and uncentralized irrigation systems, replacement of missing landscaping, addressing tree care and implementation of water conservation measures such as replacing dead/dying trees and shrubs with water-wise plantings, and lead streetlight retrofits. Should the new landscaping and lighting district be formed, it is proposed to complete many of the deferred maintenance improvements over the first few years as well as embark on the phased replacement plan for the older landscape areas. As part of the process to form a new assessment district, staff initiated a public outreach program for the Natoma Station community with two public meetings that were held on June 17, 2022, and March 13, 2024. The intent of the meetings was to discuss the options and ideas for addressing the district's financial condition and develop a viable option that would ultimately be voted on and approved, or denied, by the property owners within the district. Staff presented four potential options for this district that are as follows. One, reduce level of service based on current funding. Two, create a new district that would just cover budget deficit. Three, create a new district to address budget deficit and address some deferred maintenance. And four, create a new district to cover deficit and address all deferred maintenance and provide some enhancements. There was thoughtful discussion to ensure those in attendance had their questions answered. As a result of these two public meetings, those in attendance were supportive of option four. As such, this was the option to appear on the ballot for property owners in the district to vote on. In addition, the city's website includes information about the proposed assessment and staff have spoken with numerous residents via phone calls and emails about the proposed measure. City staff have distributed information about the new district via mail, the city website, and social media. This staff report and council resolution are being submitted for city council review and approval. The final engineer's report is prepared in accordance with Proposition 218 and the Streets and Highways Code and includes the following: Plans and Specifications, Estimated Costs, and Budgets, Method of Apportionment, the Assessment for Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026, and the Assessment Diagram. The residents of the Natoma Station Landscaping and Lighting District were sent a ballot to vote on the proposal to form a new assessment district in early February, meeting the 45-day period for the district property owners to consider the proposed assessment. At the public hearing, ballots will be counted and, in the absence of a majority protest of votes as weighted by assessment amount in accordance with assessment law against the imposition of a new assessment, the city council may consider approving this resolution to approve the final engineer's report, form the district, and authorize the levy and collection of the new assessments. The formation of a new assessment district shall be abandoned if a majority protest exists. If no majority protest exists, and the new assessment district is formed pursuant to the aforementioned procedure, the original Natoma Station Landscaping and Lighting District will be consolidated with the newly formed Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025. One Pursuant to Section 22611 of the Streets and Highways Code, all assets, liabilities, revenues, expenses, and installments of the original Natoma Station Landscaping and Lighting District will be transferred to, and assumed by, the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025-1 for the continued maintenance and servicing of the improvements. Financial Impact. There will be a small fiscal impact on the general fund to provide for the proportion of the district that provides a general benefit, which is calculated as 7.56% of the total district costs, or $28,475.91 in FI 2025 to 2026. Most of the costs associated with this district will be borne by the district and for the benefit of the district residents. Environmental Review. The formation of a landscaping and lighting district creates a financing mechanism to service existing landscaping and lighting improvements is not a project under the California Environmental Quality Act. No environmental review is required. Attachments. One Resolution 11,341A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom declaring results of the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025 to 1 ballot proceeding, approving the final engineer's report, confirming the diagram and assessments, and ordering the levying of assessments for the maintenance and servicing of improvements within said district. Two Final Engineer's Report, Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025 to 1. Submitted. Kelly Gonzalez, Parks and Recreation Director. Attachment 1. Resolution No. 11,341. A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom declaring results of the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025 to 1 ballot proceeding, approving the final engineer's report, confirming the diagram and assessments, and ordering the levying of assessments for the maintenance and servicing of improvements within said district. Whereas, City Council, on January 14, 2025, initiated the proceeding to form the proposed Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025 to 1, the district, by adopting Resolution Number 11,321, to which resolution reference is made for further particulars, end. Whereas, City Council, on January 28, 2025, declared its intention to order the formation of the district by adopting Resolution Number 11,323, to which resolution reference is made for further particulars, end. Whereas, notices of such hearing accompanied by assessment ballot materials were mailed to each record property owner in the time, form, and manner required by the assessment law, a full hearing has been given, and at this time all assessment ballots submitted pursuant to the assessment A full hearing has been given, and at this time all assessment ballots submitted pursuant to the assessment law have been tabulated by the city clerk pursuant to the terms and provisions of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen-seventy-two, Streets and Highways Code Section twenty-two thousand five hundred and following, the nineteen-seventy-two Act, Articles E-Eed, of the Constitution of the State of California, Articles E-Eed, and the Proposition two-hundred-and-eighteen Omnibus Implementation Act, Government Code Section fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty and following, Proposition two-hundred-and-eighteen end, together with the nineteen-seventy-two Act and Articles E-Eed, the assessment law, end. Whereas, the city clerk has prepared and submitted to this legislative body a certificate of tabulation official and statement of assessment ballots submitted, the certificate of the tabulation official, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit A here to and incorporated herein by this reference, which reflects the results of the tabulation of the assessment ballots, end. Whereas, the City of Folsom is now satisfied with the assessment and all matters contained in the engineers' report as submitted. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Folsom that one, the final engineers' report for the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one is hereby approved. Two, the canvassing of the ballots cast at the assessment ballot proceeding held on March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, is hereby approved and confirmed. Three, the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one is hereby formed and established with the following findings. Resolution number eleven thousand three hundred and forty-one, page one of four. A, the assessment ballots were mailed, as required by the assessment law, to the record owners of all properties proposed to be assessed within the district. B, the assessment ballots were received by the city clerk until the close of the public hearing conducted on March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. See, the assessment ballots that were completed and received by the city clerk, prior to the close of the public hearing, have been tabulated in accordance with the procedures established under the assessment law and the results of such tabulation have been submitted to the city council. D, the assessment ballots submitted in favor of the levy of assessments exceed the assessment ballots submitted in opposition to such levy as weighted by assessment amount in accordance with the assessment law. E, majority protest does not exist to the levy of assessments within the district. Four, the diagram and assessments as set forth in the final engineers' report for the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one are hereby confirmed and approved. Five, the maintenance and servicing of improvements as set forth in the final engineers' report for the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one are hereby approved and ordered. Six, the assessments set forth in the final engineers' report shall now constitute leans upon the lots or parcels of land described in said report. Seven pursuant to Section two-two-six-zero-five, D, of the Streets and Highways Code, the original Natoma Station Landscaping and Lighting District is hereby consolidated with the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one. Eight pursuant to Section two-two-six-one-one of the Streets and Highways Code, all assets, liabilities, revenues, expenses, and installments of the original Natoma Station Landscaping and Lighting District shall be transferred to, and assumed by, the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one for the continued maintenance and servicing of the improvements. Nine, the city clerk shall file a certified copy of the diagram and assessments with the auditor of Sacramento County no later than the second Monday in August twenty-twenty-five. Ten, the auditor of Sacramento County is requested to enter on the Sacramento County assessment roll the assessment for each lot or parcel of land in the amount indicated in the final engineers' report. Passed and adopted this twenty-fifth day of March twenty-twenty-five, by the following roll call vote. Eyes, nose, absent, abstain. Councilmember, S. Councilmember, S. Councilmember, S. Councilmember, S. Sarah Aquino, Mayor. Attest. Krista Fremantle, City Clerk. Exhibit A. Certificate of the Tabulation Official. Exhibit A. Certificate of Tabulation Official end. Statement of Assessment Ballots Submitted. State of California, County of Sacramento, S.S. Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one. The undersigned, the duly authorized tabulation official appointed by the City Council of the City of Folsom, does hereby certify that pursuant to the provisions of Articles E-Eed of the Constitution of the State of California and the Proposition two-hundred-and-eighteen Omnibus Implementation Act, Government Code Section fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty and following, I did tabulate the assessment ballots timely submitted in the assessment ballot proceedings pertaining to the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one. I further certify that this statement of assessment ballots received shows the assessment ballots submitted in favor of the proposed assessment and the assessment ballots submitted in opposition to the proposed assessment, each total weighted according to the financial obligation of the affected properties for which the assessment ballots were submitted. This certification is executed this underscore day of underscore twenty-twenty-five in, California. By, Title. Attachment two. City of Folsom. Final Engineers Report for Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one. January twenty-twenty-five. NBS. Help'em Communal. Fun tomorrow. NBSgov dot com. Table of Contents. One Introduction One. One point one District History One. One point two Legislative Context One. One point three Court Rulings Two. Two Improvements Four. Two point one Landscaping Four. Two point two Street Lighting Five. Two point three Public Art Five. Three Special Benefits Seven. Three point one Improved Aesthetics Seven. Three point two Improved Safety Seven. Four Separation and Quantification of General Benefits Nine. Four point one General Benefit Analysis Nine. Five Special Benefit Distribution Fourteen. Five point one Parcel Characteristics Fourteen. Five point two Lighting Factor Fifteen. Five point three Land Use Classifications Fifteen. Five point four Total Benefit Points Seventeen. Six Budget Eighteen. Six point one Maximum Amount to be Assessed Eighteen. Six point two F.I. twenty-twenty-five slash twenty-six Maximum Assessment Rate Nineteen. Six point three Annual Maximum Assessment Rate Inflation Nineteen. Six point four Future Changes to Parcel Characteristics Twenty. Six point five Data for Annual Assessment Calculations Twenty. Six point six Appeals Twenty. Six point seven Method of Collection Twenty-one. Seven Engineers Statement Twenty-two. Eight Assessment Diagram Twenty-three. Nine Assessment Roll Twenty-four. Ten References Twenty-five. Table of Tables. Table One. Average Daily Trip Generation Within the District. Ten. Table Two. Roadway Design Capacity Through District. Ten. Table Three. Estimated Pass Through Vehicle Trips Eleven. Table Four. Estimated Travel Time Through District Eleven. Table Five Dot Total Pass Through Time Eleven. Table Six. Total Pass Through Percentage Eleven. Table Seven. Adjusted Total Pass Through Percentage. Twelve. Table Eight. Overall General Benefit Thirteen. Table Nine. Land Use Benefit Points Sixteen. Table Ten. Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-five slash twenty-six Estimated Budget Eighteen. Table Eleven. Breakdown of Maximum to be Assessed Nineteen. One Introduction. One point one District History. The City of Folsom, City, desires to fund the operation, maintenance, and servicing of certain landscaping, street lighting, and public art as described in Section two of this report through an annual assessment. The proposed assessment is subject to the substantive and procedural requirements described in Section four, Article thirteen D of the California Constitution, Article thirteen D. The assessment is authorized pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen-seventy-two, Streets and Highways Code Section twenty-two thousand five hundred, E.T.S.E.Q. The Act. The district currently has an assessment which was established in nineteen ninety to provide a source of funding for the ongoing operation, maintenance, and servicing of landscaping, street lighting, public art, and other improvements within the district. However, while costs have continued to increase and the district has continued to build out and add additional trees, landscaping and street lighting, there has not been an increase in the assessment as there is no inflator. As the existing assessment district do S. not provide sufficient revenue for the services and improvements, the city proposes to form a new assessment district that is intended to provide sufficient revenue to fund ongoing annual maintenance, operation, and servicing of the landscaping, street lighting, public art, and other improvements, reserve funds for replacement and repair of the improvements, administrative expenses, and an allowance for an annual inflator so the assessment rate may be increased over time as costs increase, without conducting a new Article thirteen D balloting proceeding. The proposed assessment district is the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one, District. If approved, the new district will replace the existing assessment district beginning in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six. One point two Legislative Context. In nineteen ninety-six, California voters adopted Proposition two-hundred-and-eighteen, known as the Right to Vote on Taxes Act, which added Articles thirteen C and thirteen D to the California Constitution. Article thirteen D established new substantive NPR, federal requirements on agencies for levying assessments, being levies on real property by an agency for a special benefit conferred upon the real property. Special benefit is defined in Article thirteen D.O.S., a particular and distinct benefit over and above general benefits conferred on a real property located in the district or to the public at large. Article thirteen D imposes five basic substantive requirements on assessments. One, all parcels that will have a special benefit conferred upon them and upon which an assessment will be imposed must be identified. Two, the general benefits must be distinguished from the special benefits conferred on the parcels. Three, the proportionate special benefit derived by each identified parcel must be determined in relationship to the entirety of the capital cost of a public improvement, the maintenance, and operation expenses of a public improvement, or the cost of the property-related service being provided. NBS City of Folsom Final Engineers Report, Natoma Station Mad No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one. Prepared by NBS January twenty-twenty-five. One. Four, the amount assessed to a parcel must not exceed the reasonable cost of the proportional special benefit conferred on that parcel and must not include any costs attributable to the general benefit, end. Five, parcels within a district that are owned or used by any agency, the State of California or the United States shall not be exempt from assessment unless the agency can demonstrate by clear and convincing evidence that those publicly-owned parcels in fact receive no special benefit. Article thirteen D also imposes procedural requirements on assessments, which include preparing an engineers' report, providing written notice of the proposed assessment and public hearing to property owners, holding a public hearing, and providing for a protest ballot proceeding. One point three Court Rulings. Since the initial passage of Proposition two-hundred-and-eighteen, several court rulings have helped provide context and direction with respect to the procedures and requirements of Article thirteen D for levying assessments. Several of the key concepts from these rulings are summarized below. General Benefit. Article thirteen D requires an agency to separate the general benefits from the special benefits conferred on the identified parcels because only special benefits are assessable. The Court of Appeal in Golden Hills Neighborhood Association, Inc. v. City of San Diego, two thousand and eleven, Golden Hills, clarified this concept by stating, separation and quantification of general and special benefits must be accomplished by apportioning the cost of a service or improvement between the two and assessing property owners only for the portion of the cost representing special benefits. The Court of Appeal in Butts v. County of Riverside, two thousand and ten, Butts, noted that the trial court took judicial notice of the Legislative Analyst's Office pamphlet titled Understanding Proposition two-hundred-and-eighteen, which states an agency must estimate the amount of special benefit landowners would receive from the project or service, as well as the amount of general benefit. This step is needed because Proposition two-hundred-and-eighteen allows local government to recoup from assessments only the proportionate share of cost to provide the special benefit. The Court in Butts furthered this idea stating, separating the general from the special benefits of a public improvement project and estimating the quantity of each in relation to the other is essential if an assessment is to be limited to the special benefits. The Court of Appeal in Silicon Valley Taxpayers Association Incorporated v. Santa Clara County Open Space Authority, two thousand and eight, clarified that general benefits are not restricted to benefits conferred only on persons and property outside the assessment district but can include benefits both conferred on real property located in the district or to the public at large. The Court defined the "public at large" as comprising all members of the public, including those who live, work, and shop within the district, and not simply transient visitors. The Court of Appeal again reiterated the need to separate, quantify, and apportion costs to general benefits from the improvements in Broad Beach Geological Hazard Abatement District V three-one-five-zero-six, Victoria Point LLC. City of Folsom Final Engineers Report, Natoma Station Mad No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one prepared by NBS January twenty-twenty-five. Two. Twenty-twenty-two, stating, the district cites no authority, and we are aware of none, suggesting that an agency's subjective intent determines the need to account for general benefits. Benefit-based, not cost-based. In Town of Tiburon v. Benander, two thousand and nine, Tiburon, the Court of Appeal clarified the idea that assessments must be apportioned based upon benefit rather than cost. The Court stated, proportionate special benefit is the basis upon which a project's total assessable costs are apportioned among parcels within an assessment district. The assessment on a particular property cannot be based on the relative cost of the improvements to the property, but rather on the special benefit conferred on such property. The Court in Tiburon also stated, an assessment represents the entirety of the cost of the improvement or property-related service, less any amount attributable to general benefits, which may not be assessed, allocated to individual properties in proportion to the relative special benefit conferred on the property. Measuring and Apportioning Special Benefit. The Court in Tiburon acknowledged the difficulty of trying to precisely assign and measure special benefit, stating, any attempt to classify special benefits conferred on particular properties and to assign relative weights to those benefits will necessarily involve some degree of imprecision. The Court in Tiburon went on to say that a formula assigning equal weight to different special benefits may be a legally justifiable approach to measuring and apportioning special benefits, but it is not necessarily the only valid approach. Whichever approach is taken to measuring and apportioning special benefits, however, it must be both defensible and consistently applied. Two Improvements. The assessments will fund the following maintenance, operation, and servicing activities related to the following improvements. Landscaping. Street Lighting. Public Art. The maintenance, operation, and servicing activities listed above are collectively referred to as the improvements. A general illustration of the location of the improvements is shown below, and the assessment diagram can be found in Section eight. Dot NAF. Legend. CL Natoma Station. Streetscape. Cue Orderly Weed. Abatement Median. Street Lights. Public Art Work. Natoma Station Parcels with Secured Roll July twenty-twenty-four. For illustration purposes only, not an official map. Two point one Landscaping. The improvements include the maintenance, operation, and servicing of street trees and other landscaping throughout the boundary of the district including but not limited to, ground cover, turf, trees, weed, and pest management, shrubs, planters, street medians in the public right-of-way as well as open space, trails. NBS. City of Folsom Final Engineers Report, Natoma Station Mad No. twenty-twenty-five-to-one prepared by NBS January twenty-twenty-five. Five. And greenbelt areas dispersed throughout the district, and may also include sidewalk and hardscape improvements, entry monuments, and associated appurtenant facilities. Eligible district costs may include, but are not limited to, personnel, furnishing electrical energy, utilities such as water, refuse and gas, materials, contracting services, and other items necessary for the satisfactory operation of these services. The general location of the improvements within the district is shown in the illustration above. The maintenance, operation, and servicing of the landscaping generally includes the following. One, nine point three-seven acres of streetscapes. Two, seven large entry monument signs. Three, ten thousand two hundred linear feet of six sound wall. Four, one thousand and forty-five Four one thousand and forty five linear feet of iron fencing. Five nine point one acres of open space. Six two, many parks. Seven sixteen irrigation controllers. Eight thirty seven backflows. Nine twenty seven corner pillars, between fences. Ten redwoods on Black Diamond Drive. Eleven open space slash basin maintenance. Twelve overall maintenance of sidewalks, pressure washing, crack filling, et cetera. Thirteen tree maintenance. Fourteen painting, replacing light poles. Fifteen replacing obsolete, inefficient, and aging infrastructure with new industry-standard equipment. Sixteen sufficient funding for current and future maintenance and replacement costs. Two point two Street Lighting. The improvements include the maintenance, operation, and servicing of street lighting, including theme light poles, ornamental lighting, and other appurtenant facilities in the public right-of-way areas throughout the boundary of the district. The improvements are generally described as, maintenance, operation, and servicing of public street lighting facilities, including all works or improvements used or useful for the lighting of any public places, including ornamental standards, luminaires, poles, supports, tunnels, manholes, vaults, condits, pipes, wires, conductors, guys, stubs, platforms, braces, transformers, insulators, contacts, switches, capacitors, meters, communication circuits, appliances, attachments, and appurtenances. Maintenance, operation, and servicing includes, but is not limited to, personnel, furnishing utilities, electrical energy and timing slash switching, lamp changing, emergency services, pole painting, fixture cleaning, glassware replacement, and rehabilitation, which includes modernization and replacement of systems, repairs including poles, conduit, wiring, and fusing, and fixtures repair and replacement, contracting services and other items necessary for the satisfactory operation of these services. Currently, there are two hundred and ninety six total streetlights within the district. Two point three Public Art. The improvements include the maintenance of public art pieces found in the boundary of the district. The city has twenty eight public art pieces, twenty one of which are located within the district. The district will fund costs in connection with the maintenance of the public art pieces including, but not limited to, personnel, supplies, contracting services, and other expenses necessary for the satisfactory maintenance of these art pieces located at village entries and many parks. Three Special Benefits. The improvements will confer special benefits upon certain parcels within the proposed district based upon the parcel characteristics described in section five. This section provides a description of those special benefits. Improvement Benefit, S. Landscaping, public art, and street lighting. Improved aesthetics and improved safety. Three point one Improved Aesthetics. The aesthetic benefit relates to the increase in the overall aesthetics as a result of the ongoing maintenance, operation, and servicing of the improvements within the district. Specifically, the landscaping and public art are believed to create a more beautiful, aesthetically pleasing environment within the district, and they enhance the overall image and desirability of the properties within the district. A study by the University of Georgia found people's preferences for locating areas of social interactions incoming. Beautiful and nature-dominated areas revolve around the presence of community trees and forests, Coder, nineteen ninety six. The same study noted large old street trees were found to be the most important indicator of attractiveness in a community, Coder. Conversely, appeal decreases when improvements are not well maintained, unsafe, or destroyed by vandalism, the Victoria Transportation Institute, two thousand and eleven. Streetscapes and public art have a significant effect on how people view and interact with their community. With streetscapes that are safe and inviting, and public art that is well maintained, people are more likely to walk, which can help reduce automobile traffic, improve public health, stimulate local economic activity, and attract residents and visitors to the community. Therefore, the landscaping and public art improvements will confer aesthetic benefits to properties in close proximity. Additionally, street lighting contributes to the aesthetic appeal of neighborhoods and support local economies by making non-residential areas more inviting. In fact, the streetlights themselves can contribute to the overall aesthetic of an area. According to an American Gaslamp Works article titled Replacing Street Lights for Brighter and Safer Communities, well-lit streets aren't just a convenience, they're essential for a thriving community. Streetlights create a welcoming ambience that invites people to linger in public spaces, supporting businesses, and creating a cozy sense of belonging. Even the look of the streetlights themselves contributes to the overall aesthetic of a neighborhood. Three point two Improved Safety. The improvements will provide a measure of safety for pedestrian and vehicular traffic within the district. Published studies having different methodologies tend to converge on an overall average reported twenty percent to thirty percent reduction in nighttime crash risk from lighting, National Cooperative Highway Research Program Transportation Research Board of the National Academies, two thousand and nine. This is of particular importance in a residential area where pedestrians are likely to be present during nighttime hours. The same report also states, "Lighting has a positive effect on reducing crime." The increased level of visibility, during these City of Folsom Final Engineers Report, Natoma Station Mad No. twenty twenty five to one prepared by NBS, January twenty twenty five. Seven. Darker periods of the day will reduce opportunities for potential vandalism and other property-related crimes. As further detailed, lighting has a positive effect on reducing crime and the positive benefits are similar to those observed for roadway lighting reducing crashes. The creation of a cohesive neighborhood is also accomplished by lighting in that lighting may send a message that goes beyond visibility as a means for providing a community with crime-reducing benefit. Review of the Safety Benefits and Other Effects of Roadway Lighting, National Cooperative Highway Research Program, Transportation Research Board of the National Academies, two thousand and nine. Additionally, landscaping can improve safety in a community. Well-kept landscapes can help people see and avoid surprises and accidents. And proper drainage can help prevent drivers from losing control of their vehicles in the rain and keep pedestrians dry. According to comparison of safety performance of urban streets before and after landscaping improvements, appropriately landscaped roadside scenes may have influence on travel-related stress recovery. In addition, IT WAS revealed that landscaped center strips or median planting appears to reduce perceived land width and therefore, to discourage speeding. Generally, the discouraged speed is one of the contributing factors of decreases in crash rates or pedestrian accidents on streets. Therefore, the street lighting improvements will confer safety benefits. Four Separation and Quantification of General Benefits. As described above, only special benefits are assessable, therefore, to assess only special benefits, the general benefits resulting from the improvements must be separated and quantified. This section describes the process used to separate and quantify the general benefits. Four point one General Benefit Analysis. As detailed below, it is estimated the improvements will confer an overall general benefit of seven point five six percent. The amount of general benefit that is provided from the district's maintenance activities cannot be funded via property owner's assessments. General Benefit: Vehicles Passing Through the District. Traffic volume is utilized to help determine special benefits accruing to the district as opposed to the general benefits received by the public at large from the improvements. As a result of the improvements, there will be a level of general benefit conferred to pass-through vehicle traffic related to properties outside of the district whose occupants do not intend to access property within the district. As such, the benefit derived by pass-through vehicle traffic needs to be quantified. The percentage of pass-through vehicle traffic is calculated by comparing the estimated daily district-generated vehicle trips to the total roadway design capacity, as detailed below. In order to determine the average daily trips generated by parcels located within the district, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I-T, Trip Generation Handbook was utilized to estimate the average daily trip counts by land use classification for each parcel. For the I-T Trip Generation User's Guide, a trip is defined as a single or one-direction vehicle movement with either the origin or the destination, exiting and entering, inside a study site. For trip generation purposes, the total trips for a land use over a given period of time are the total of all trips entering plus all trips exiting a site during a designated time period. The ADT rates used in this analysis are shown in the table on the following page and came from I-T Trip Generation Manual eleventh edition. Any future changes to a parcel's land use classification resulting in changes to the parcel's ADT rates will be based on the values found in the eleventh edition of the I-T Trip Generation Manual or the current edition as may be released from time to time, or similar manual in the event the I-T manual is no longer published at the time of calculation. It should be noted that while undeveloped slash utility land use classifications may potentially utilize the improvements on a limited basis, the I-T manual does not provide ADT rates for these land uses. Therefore, the trip generation for these land use classifications is zero. O-N-B City of Folsom Final Engineers Report Natoma Station Mad No. twenty twenty five to one. Prepared by NBS, January twenty twenty five. Nine. Table one. Average Daily Trip Generation Within the District. Therefore, the number of estimated daily trips generated by the district is fifty thousand eight hundred and ninety one point nine four. The next step is to estimate the number of pass-through vehicle trips passing through the district. Roadway Design Capacity is a critical element that affects trip distribution and was utilized in this analysis to estimate the number of daily vehicle trips passing through the district. From a visual inspection of the district, the primary higher functional classification roadways serving the district parcels are Folsom Boulevard, Iron Point Road and Blue Ravine Road roadway design capacities were estimated based on the functional classification of the roadway, the number of lanes, and consultation with city staff. Roadway Design Capacity was calculated for the higher functional classification roadways, hence fourth referred to as the major roads, identified below in order to estimate the total daily traffic flow through the district. Table two. Roadway Design Capacity Through District. One, equals the design capacity of each roadway, reduced by twenty five percent to recognize the city's C level of service. Breakdown by Street Name Above. City of Folsom Final Engineers Report Natoma Station Mad No. twenty twenty five to one. Prepared by NBS, January twenty twenty five. Eleven. Therefore, the estimated number of pass-through vehicle traffic related to properties outside of the district is one hundred and seven thousand five hundred and eight of the vehicle trips through the district. Table three. Estimated Pass-Through Vehicle Trips. One, breakdown by street name in table one above. However, simply estimating the number of pass-through vehicle trips alone is not an accurate indication of the level of benefit accruing to these vehicles. Estimating the total amount of time these pass-through vehicles spend within the district, as compared to the actual properties permanently within the district, is a better indicator of the temporary benefits accruing to the pass-through vehicles. To estimate the total time these pass-through vehicles spend within the district on a daily basis, we must take into account the total length of the district along major streets and the average speed limit of these streets, using the local speed limit. Table four. Estimated Travel Time Through District. Applying the travel time through the district per vehicle of zero point zero six three hours to each of the pass-through vehicle trips results in a total pass-through time of six thousand seven hundred and eighty hours per day, in which vehicles passing through the district spend time in proximity to the improvements. Tables dot total pass-through time. We now need to relate this total daily pass-through time to the total time the district properties spend in permanent proximity to the improvements provided through the district. Table six. Total Pass-Through Percentage. One, equals the number of assessable properties within the district, one thousand three hundred and ninety three, multiplied by twenty four, hours. The percentage of time spent by pass-through vehicles driving through the district is sixteen point eight six percent. However, this is not yet the percentage of general benefit accruing to occupants of pass-through vehicles. Not all pass-through vehicles will travel the full length of the district. Some may only travel within a portion of the district, while some may travel its full length. Therefore, a reduction factor of fifty percent is applied. Furthermore, vehicles passing through the district only receive limited benefit from the landscaping and street lighting improvements along sections of Blue Ravine Road and Iron Point Road, and no benefit from the public art improvements as the art is only found within the parks as well as some of the interior neighborhood entries. Therefore, an additional reduction factor of thirty three percent is applied. To recognize these reduced pass-through benefits, the adjusted total pass-through percentage is calculated on the following page. Table seven. Adjusted Total Pass-Through Percentage. The five point five six percent adjusted total pass-through percentage is considered the general benefit accruing to vehicles passing through the district, as a result of the improvements. General Benefit: Bicycle Traffic. An estimated one percent of all U.S. trips are made by bicycle. According to Walk Score, the community received a bikable rating of sixty four out of one hundred and there are several bike lanes scattered throughout the district. According to the National Household Travel Surveys, forty nine percent of bike trips are for recreation, exercise, and sports. As a result of the district maintenance improvements, there will be a level of general benefit to bicycle traffic that is not associated with property in the district. As such, the general benefit portion of the improved benefits resulting from the improvements is estimated to be point five zero percent, rounded up to one point zero zero percent, from bicycle traffic. General Benefit: Pedestrian Traffic. Additionally, the commonly accepted distance people will walk for public transportation, goods, and services is one quarter mile. As a result of the district maintenance improvements, there will be a level of general benefit to pedestrian traffic that is not associated with property in the district. According to Walk Score, the community is mostly dependent upon vehicles to navigate, with a low walk score of thirty six out of one hundred, however, there are multiple forms of public transportation available throughout the district. A person living within proximity of the district boundary may decide to walk to the bus stop for public transportation. As such, the general benefit portion of the improved benefits resulting from the improvements is estimated to be one point zero zero percent from pass-through pedestrian traffic. NBS. City of Folsom Final Engineers Report Natoma Station Mad No. twenty twenty five to one. Prepared by NBS January twenty twenty five. Twelve. Overall General Benefit. To determine an overall general benefit percentage to apply to the district, it is necessary to combine the separately analyzed components of each of the general benefits described above. As the benefits conferred by the improvements are independent of each other, it is appropriate to combine the individual general benefit percentages to determine accumulative overall general benefit. The table below summarizes the overall general benefit for the district. Table eight. Overall General Benefit. The general benefit, which is the percentage of the total budget that must be funded through sources other than assessments, is seven point five six percent. The special benefit, which is the percentage of the total budget that may be funded by assessments, is ninety two point four four percent. Five Special Benefit Distribution. Once special benefits are identified, the cost of providing those special benefits must then be assigned, based on the estimated proportionate special benefit derived by each parcel. The proportionate special benefit that each parcel derives from the district's improvements is calculated based on an analysis of each parcel's physical characteristics and land use classification. This section describes the assignment of special benefit to each parcel. Five point one Parcel Characteristics. The method of apportioning benefit to parcels within the district reflects the proportional special benefit assigned to each property as a result of the improvements, based upon the various property characteristics for each parcel as compared to other properties within the district. As part of the special benefit analysis, various property characteristics were analyzed including lot size, building size, distance from street lighting, and land use. Given that the special benefits provided by the improvements focus on livability, safety, and aesthetics, it was determined that lot acreage, distance to lighting, and land use are the most appropriate parcel factors. Each parcel's lot acreage, proximity to lighting, and land use classification have been used as the primary assessment variables for the calculation and assignment of parcel factors. Lot Factor. The average lot size for all assessable parcels within the district is approximately zero point two six acres. Each assessable parcel's actual lot acreage was divided by the district's average lot acreage to determine Each accessible parcel's actual lot acreage was divided by the district's average lot acreage to determine a lot factor. However, an average single-family home is situated on approximately zero point two-five acres with an average building square footage of approximately one thousand nine hundred and fifty-three. Therefore, to ensure those residential parcels sitting on lots larger than zero point two-five acres are not paying a disproportionate share based upon the larger lot size, a maximum lot acreage of zero point two-five acres has been assigned to those residential parcels with lot sizes exceeding zero point two-five acres. Prepared by N B S, January 2025. Fourteen. Parcel's Lot. Acreage. District's Average. I. Lot Acreage. Parcels. Lot Factor. It should be noted that Sacramento County Secured Roll Data does not provide accurate acreage information for the parcels within the Waterford Place Community located at two forty Natoma Station Drive. However, according to the C C N Rs for the community, the community is recognized as one single community with one common area. As a result, the total lot acreage for the entire community was measured in GIs at eighteen point nine-one acres. In order to allocate the total lot acreage to all accessible parcels within the Waterford Place Community, each parcel's individual building square footage was divided by the total building square footage of all parcels within the Waterford Place Community in order to arrive at a percentage waiting to apply against the total lot acreage footprint. Additionally, Sacramento County Secured Roll Data does not provide accurate acreage information for the parcels within the Folsom Professional Center located at one ninety-three Blue Ravine Road. However, the twenty-six parcels within the Folsom Professional Center are all contained within the same lot acreage footprint, measured by GIs as approximately five point eight-eight acres. Therefore, in order to allocate the total lot acreage to all accessible parcels within the Folsom Professional Center, each parcel's individual building square footage was divided by the two, N B S City of Folsom Final Engineers Report Natoma Station Mad No 2025 to One. Total building square footage of all parcels within the Folsom Professional Center in order to arrive at a percentage waiting to apply against the total lot acreage footprint. Five point two Lighting Factor. The streetlights to be funded by the assessment are located throughout the district, along both the major and arterial streets as well as some of the interior streets and residential subdivisions. From every direction traversing the district, there is street lighting, offering a greater level of aesthetic and safety benefits. Therefore, all land use classifications are assigned a lighting factor of one point zero to recognize the aesthetic and safety benefits received from the street lighting improvements. Additionally, as mentioned above, certain local streets contain interior street lighting, in some cases fronting the parcels, contributing to the enhanced character and safety of the surrounding area. It is recognized that standard streetlights typically have a designed light distribution pattern that aims to provide adequate illumination along the roadway or surrounding area. Therefore, parcels in closer proximity to a streetlight will receive greater benefit from the streetlight improvements. Additionally, of the approximately two ninety-six streetlights in the district, one-twelve are considered interior streetlights, approximately thirty-eight percent. As a result, those parcels in closer proximity to interior street lighting were assigned an additional zero point three-eight lighting factor to recognize the aesthetic and safety benefits received from the street lighting improvements. Five point three Land Use Classifications. In addition to lot size and distance from the street lighting improvements, a parcel's land use will also affect the special benefits received. Following the calculation of each parcel's characteristic factors above, land use benefit points were assigned. These benefit points correspond to the special benefits described in Section Three. Each parcel within the proposed district boundary is assigned a land use classification to determine the special benefits received. Below is a description of the land use classifications to be assessed within the district. Residential Property Consists of Parcels That Have Stand-Alone Residential Dwelling Units With Their Own Lots Intended For One Family. Non-Residential Property Consists of Parcels Used For Non-Profit Or For Profit Purposes, Including But Not Limited To Oh Commercial Or Industrial Including, But Not Limited To: Retail, Restaurants, Commercial Garages, Private Schools, Churches, Daycare Centers, Gas Stations, Fast Food Restaurants, Shopping Plazas, Hotels/Motels, And Parcels Where Goods Are Manufactured, Warehoused, Or Distributed. Oh Office Including Government And Public, Excluding Schools, Medical, Dental, And Business Parks. Oh Multi-Family Residential Consisting Of A Single Parcel Or Group Of Parcels Offered For Rent Or Ownership, Containing Apartments, Units Of Five Or More, Exclusively For Residential Purposes. G, N B S City of Folsom Final Engineers Report, Natoma Station Mad No 2025 to One. Prepared by N B S, January 2025. Sixteen. School Property Consists Of Parcels That Have Public Schools And Associated Parking Lots, Recreational Facilities, Parks, And Undeveloped And Open Space Lands. Park/Recreational Property Consists Of Certain Park Parcels And Trails, Oakville Pond And Natoma Station Pond Which Are Not Being Maintained By The District Nor Included As Part Of The District Improvements. Undeveloped/Utility Property Consists Of Parcels With Utility Towers, Communications Lines, Gas And Electric Lines And Easements, Water, Sanitation, And Irrigation Lines And Towers, And Other Apparatus Related To The Operation Of Utility Parcels As Well As Public Parking Lots. There are currently a total of one thousand four hundred and forty-seven parcels in the district. Of those parcels, one thousand three hundred and ninety-three parcels have been identified as accessible parcels. Those fifty-four parcels in the district deemed to receive no benefit from the improvements that are non-accessible include easements, dedicated open space, roads, common areas, parcels containing the improvements themselves, and sliver parcels. Land Use Benefit Points. The table below summarizes the land use benefit points assigned to the various accessible land use classifications within the district. Table Nine. Land Use Benefit Points. Aesthetic: The aesthetic benefits conferred by the improvements are universal benefits for all land use classifications. The benefit of visual appeal is not restricted to a particular land use. A more attractive public environment benefits all parcels irrespective of land use classification. As noted in Section Three point one, the improvements are believed to create a more beautiful, aesthetically pleasing environment within the district, and they enhance the overall image and desirability of the properties within the district. Accordingly, each accessible land use classification will be assigned one point zero aesthetic benefit point. However, school land use classifications are assigned zero point five zero aesthetic benefits and park/recreational and undeveloped/utility land use classifications are assigned zero point two-five aesthetic benefits because these property types do not receive the same level of special benefits associated with aesthetic as do other properties. Safety: The safety benefits conferred by the improvements are universal benefits for all land use classifications within the district. Safety can be thought of as a universal need. As noted in Section Three point three, the improvements will provide a measure of safety for pedestrian and vehicular traffic within the district. Accordingly, each accessible land use classification will be assigned one point zero safety benefit point. However, school land use classifications are assigned zero point five zero aesthetic benefits and park/recreational and undeveloped/utility land use classifications are assigned zero point five zero and zero point two-five safety benefits because these O N S S City of Folsom Final Engineers Report Natoma Station Mad No 2025 to One. Property Types Do Not Receive The Same Level Of Special Benefits Associated With Safety As Do Other Properties. Five point four Total Benefit Points. The calculation of total benefit points for each parcel considers each component analyzed and described above, Lot Factor, Lighting Factor, Land Use Classification. The formula for determining each parcel's total benefit points is as follows. City of Folsom Final Engineers Report Natoma Station Mad No 2025 to One. Prepared by N B S, January 2025. Seventeen. Plus, X. Lot Factor Lighting Factor Total Land Use Benefit Points. Special Benefit Points. The total special benefit points are computed for each parcel in the district and summed. The total district's special benefit points are five thousand five hundred and thirty-five point three-six. These total special benefit points are used to determine the proposed assessment amounts on each parcel. Six Budget. The following table summarizes the estimated annual costs to fund the improvements for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-five slash twenty-six. Table Ten. Fiscal Vayor Twenty Twenty-five slash Twenty-Six Estimated Budget. Six point one Maximum Amount To Be Assessed. The total maximum amount to be assessed upon the specially benefiting accessible parcels is the total cost of the improvements, as detailed above, less the portion of costs attributable to general benefit as detailed in the separation and quantification of general benefits section. The calculation of the balance to be assessed is shown on the following page. Table Eleven. Breakdown Of Maximum To Be Assessed. One, the final assessment rates in Section Nine have been truncated to two decimal places. Each year the estimated budget may change, which will cause a corresponding change in the dollar amount of general benefit. However, the general benefit percentage will remain at seven point five-six percent in future years. Six point two F I Twenty Twenty-five slash Twenty-six Maximum Assessment Rate. The maximum assessment rate per special benefit point is calculated by dividing the total costs to be assessed by the total special benefit points assigned to the parcels within the district for the improvements. The following formula provides the assessment rate per special benefit point for the improvements. Prepared by N B S, January 2025. Nineteen. Total Improvement Costs To Be Assessed. Four hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and forty-four cents. Total Special Benefit Points. I. Five thousand five hundred and thirty-five point three-six. Maximum Assessment Rate Per Special Benefit Point. Seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. The maximum assessment rate per special benefit point for the improvements is then multiplied by each parcel's total special benefit points to determine the maximum assessment amount per parcel. Six point three Annual Maximum Assessment Rate Inflation. Each parcel's maximum assessment is determined by multiplying the maximum assessment rate per special benefit point by the parcel's total special benefit points. If the total special benefit points for all accessible parcels in the district change in future years, the maximum allowable annual assessment rate per special benefit point will not be recalculated. The maximum allowable annual assessment rate per special benefit point, plus the annual cost of living inflator, will remain fixed. The actual annual assessment rate per special benefit point will be calculated by dividing the fiscal year's total cost of improvements to be assessed by the total special benefit points, not to exceed the maximum allowable annual assessment rate per special benefit point for that fiscal year. The maximum allowable assessment rate per special benefit point is escalated each year on July first by the annual change in the February-to-February Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, for the San Francisco-Oakland-Hayward C.A. area, C P I, not to exceed three percent annually, beginning July first, twenty twenty-six. In any given year, the assessments may be at any rate sufficient to meet the estimated budget and levied without undertaking an assessment ballot proceeding, as long as the actual assessment rate per special benefit point does not exceed the maximum assessment rate per special benefit point as described above for that fiscal year. If the change in C P I effective for any fiscal year is determined to be negative, the O N B S City of Folsom Final Engineers Report Natoma Station Mad No 2025 to One. Maximum Assessment Rate Will Remain Unchanged From The Previous Fiscal Year. The actual assessment rate may vary from year to year but will be no higher than the maximum rate. Six point four Future Changes To Parcel Characteristics. Future changes to any of the parcel characteristics detailed in Section Five will cause possible changes in the total assessment revenue. The assessment revenue for any given year will be the product of the district's parcel characteristics, special benefit points, and the budget in effect for such fiscal year. Development Within The District That Increases The Overall Lot Acreage, for example, will lead to possible increased assessment revenue, even if the assessment rate per special benefit point is not increased. By way of example, when a previously undeveloped parcel develops into a single-family residential land use classification, the parcel will no longer be assessed as an undeveloped land use, but rather as a single-family residential parcel with the updated parcel characteristics. Six point five Data For Annual Assessment Calculations. Each year, as part of the assessment calculation procedures, the city, or its designated consultant shall determine the land use and lot size for each parcel based on the county assessor's use code or other supplementary information made available and deemed reliable. In the event the county assessor's data is deemed to be unreliable, the city or its designated consultant shall utilize other sources of data including but not limited to city records, county assessor's parcel maps, GIs data, and online research. Assessment amounts for each parcel may change over time in accordance with changes to parcel characteristics including land use classification and lot size. Six point six Appeals. If any property owner believes the data used to calculate the assessment is inaccurate for any reason, the property owner shall submit, in writing, a request for review to the city. The property owner shall provide documentation to support the request for review. The city or its designated consultant shall review the request and provide a response to the property owner. The property owner must be current in the payment of all assessments when filing the request for review and must remain current during the review process. If the review conducted by the city or its designated consultant results in the approval for changes to any parcel characteristics used to compute the assessment, the city, or its designated consultant shall recalculate the assessment. When recalculating the assessment, the assessment rates actually applied in such fiscal year shall be used. Only the assessment for the parcel or parcels subject to review shall be recalculated. If the recalculated assessment for the parcel or parcels being reviewed is less than the amount submitted to the county on the secured property tax roll, the difference shall be credited back to the property owner in a manner approved by the city. This credit shall be limited to the current fiscal year and the prior fiscal year, if applicable. The fiscal year shall follow the county's fiscal year for property taxes, from July first to June thirtieth. The applicable fiscal year shall be determined by the date the request for review is submitted to the city. The credit may be provided in the form of a check issued to the property owner, an adjustment to the current year's property tax roll, if possible, or a credit to the succeeding year's assessment thereby reducing the amount placed on the secured property tax roll for such year. O N B S. City of Folsom Final Engineers Report Natoma Station Mad No 2025 to One. Prepared by N B S, January 2025 twenty. If the recalculated assessment is greater than the amount submitted to the county on the secured property tax roll, the city, or its designated consultant shall apply the recalculated assessment to the succeeding year's property tax roll and no adjustments shall be made to the prior or current fiscal year's assessments. In any dispute over parcel characteristic data used to compute assessments, the city, or its designated consultant shall make a conclusive determination and its decision shall be final. Six point seven Method Of Collection. The assessments will be collected annually on the Sacramento County Secured Property Tax Roll. The assessments will be subject to the county's assigned due dates and late penalties. However, the city or its designated consultant may choose to collect the assessments in an alternate manner, including directly billing the property owner, as may be deemed appropriate or necessary by the city or as allowed by law. City of Folsom Final Engineers Report Natoma Station Mad No 2025 to One. Prepared by N B S, January 2025. Twenty-three. Seven Engineers Statement. The City of Folsom Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No 2025 to One Assessment, T S described in this report have been prepared pursuant to Article thirteen D of the California Constitution. In preparing these assessments, one, I have identified all parcels that will have a special benefit conferred upon them by the improvements described in Section Two of this report, the specially benefited parcels. A four particulars as to the identification of these parcels, reference is made to the assessment diagram, a copy of which is included in Section Eight of this report. Two, I have assessed the estimated costs and expenses of the improvements upon the specially benefited parcels. In making such assessment, A, the proportionate special benefit derived from the improvements by each specially benefited parcel was determined in relationship to the entirety of the cost of the improvements. B, no assessment has been imposed on any specially benefited parcel which exceeds the reasonable cost of the proportional special benefit conferred on such parcel by the improvements, and C the general benefits have been separated from the special benefits and only special benefits have been assessed. I, the undersigned, respectfully submit this engineer's report and, to the best of my knowledge, information, and belief, this engineer's report, assessments, and the assessment diagram herein have been prepared and computed in accordance with the assessment law. Assessment Engineer. R C E one four eight S three. Point one slash one dot O slash T T J T. Number fourteen thousand nine hundred and twelve. T C M L. Eight Assessment Diagram. The following pages contain the assessment diagram for the district. Assessment Diagram. City of Folsom. Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. Twenty twenty five to one. Sheet one O U. One thousand five hundred feet. O N B S. Assessment Diagram City of Folsom. Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. Twenty twenty five to one. S H E T two O F four. Nine Assessment Roll. The following pages contain the proposed twenty twenty five slash twenty six assessment roll for the district. N B S. City of Folsom Final Engineers Report Natoma Station Mad Note twenty twenty five to one. Prepared by N B S, January twenty twenty five twenty four. Ten References. American Gaslamp Works: Replacing Streetlights for Brighter and Safer Communities. Link, H T T P S slash slash American Gaslamp dot com slash blog slash replacing streetlights slash number colon text equals well percent two daylight percent twenty streets percent twenty errant T is percent twenty disabled percent twenty in percent twenty your percent twenty browser. Butz V C N T Y. Of Riverside, one hundred and eighty-four calories ap fourth one thousand five hundred and sixteen, one thousand five hundred and thirty-two, two thousand and ten. Broad Beach Geological Hazard Abatement District V three one five zero six Victoria Point L L C, V three zero four six nine nine, eighty-one calories ap fifth zero sixty-eight, one thousand and ninety, twenty twenty-two. Coder, Kim D. Identified Benefits of Community Trees and Forests. University of Georgia Cooperative Extension Service, Forest Resources Publication, October nineteen ninety-six. Golden Hill Neighborhood Association V City of San Diego C A four slash one, D zero six two two zero three, one hundred and ninety-nine calories ap fourth four hundred and sixteen, four hundred and thirty-eight, two thousand and eleven. Institute of Transportation Engineers, Trip Generation Manual, eleventh edition. Washington, D C, twenty twenty-two. Carney, N R Residential Development Patterns and Neighborhood Satisfaction: Impacts of Density and Nearby Nature. Environment and Behavior, thirty-eight, one hundred and twelve to one hundred and thirty-nine, two thousand and six. Litman, Todd. Community Livability: Helping to Create Attractive, Safe, Cohesive Communities. Victoria Transport Policy Institute, two thousand and ten. H T T P colon slash slash W W W dot V T P I dot org slash T D M slash T D M nine seven dot H D M. Mock, Landfair, and Naderi: Comparison of Safety Performance of Urban Streets Before and After Landscaping Improvements, July twenty-eighth to thirtieth, two thousand and three. Study Link, H T T P S slash slash NaCTO dot org slash W P content slash upload slash twenty fifteen slash zero four slash comparison underscore of underscore safety underscore performance underscore of underscore urban underscore streets underscore after underscore landscape. Underscore improvements underscore mock dot P D F. National Cooperative Highway Research Program, Transportation Research Board of the National Academy's two thousand and nine annual report, two thousand and nine. Pucher, J. Bueller R. Marrone, F., and Baumann, A. American Journals of Public Health, Supplement one, Vol. one hundred and one, No. S L., two thousand and eleven. Walking and Cycling in the United States, two thousand and one to two thousand and nine, Evidence from the National Household Travel Surveys. Retrieved from H T T P colon slash slash W W W dot N C B I dot N L M dot N I H dot gov slash pubmed slash two one five five one three eight seven. Silicon Valley Taxpayers Association Incorporated V Santa Clara County Open Space Authority, forty-four calories ap fourth four hundred and thirty-one, two thousand and eight. Town of Tiburon V Benander, one hundred and eighty calories ap fourth one thousand and fifty-seven, one thousand and eighty-four, two thousand and nine. Walk Score. Twenty twenty-four, Walk Score Methodology. Retrieve H T T P colon slash slash W W W dot WalkScore dot com slash methodology dot S H T M L. U S Department of Transportation. Federal Highway Administration. Two thousand and eleven, Summary of Travel Trends, two thousand and nine National Household Travel Survey. Report No. F H W A P L eleven dash zero twenty-two. Retrieved from H T T P colon slash slash N H T S dot Ornell dot gov. City of Folsom Final Engineers Report, Natoma Station Mad Note twenty twenty-five to one. Prepared by N B S, January twenty twenty five twenty-five. Folsom City Council. Staff Report. Meeting Date. March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Agenda Section. Joint Meeting Public Hearing. Subject. Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number Seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five. Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and forty-four, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom Authorizing the Issuance of the City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number Seven Special Tax Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five, The Execution of an Indenture Providing Therefore, Authorizing the Execution of a Local Obligation Purchase Contract, and Authorizing Necessary Actions and the Execution of Other Documents in Connection Therewith. Resolution No. zero fourteen Folsom Ranch F A, A Resolution of the Governing Board of the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Authorizing the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Not to Exceed. Twelve million dollar aggregate principal amount of City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number Seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five, Approving the Form and Substance of a Trust Agreement, Authorizing Modifications thereof and Execution and Delivery as Modified, Approving a Preliminary Official Statement, Authorizing Changes thereto and Execution and Delivery of an Official Statement to be Derived Therefrom, Approving a Local Obligation Purchase Contract. And a Bond Purchase Contract and Execution and Delivery of each, and Authorizing Related Actions Necessary to Implement the Proposed Financing. From. Finance Department. One. Recommendation I City Council Action. It is recommended that the City Council and Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Board conduct the public hearing and receive any public testimony. Following the close of the public hearing, it is recommended that the City Council adopt the following resolution. Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and forty-four A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom Authorizing the Issuance of the City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number Seven Special Tax Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five, The Execution of an Indenture Providing Therefore, Authorizing the Execution of a Local Obligation Purchase Contract, and Authorizing Necessary Actions and the Execution of Other Documents in Connection Therewith. It is further recommended that the Governing Board of the Authority adopt the following resolution. Resolution No. zero fourteen Folsom Ranch F A A Resolution of the Governing Board of the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Authorizing the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Not to Exceed. Twelve million dollar aggregate principal amount of City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number Seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five, Approving the Form and Substance of a Trust Agreement, Authorizing Modifications thereof and Execution and Delivery as Modified, Approving a Preliminary Official Statement, Authorizing Changes thereto and Execution and Delivery of an Official Statement to be Derived Therefrom, Approving a Local Obligation Purchase Contract. And a Bond Purchase Contract and Execution and Delivery of each, and Authorizing Related Actions Necessary to Implement the Proposed Financing. Background slash Issue. Community Facilities District Number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, C F D Number twenty-three, is a community facilities district organized by the City Council under the Melrose Act for the purpose of providing for the construction and acquisition of certain public improvements and the financing of certain services to serve property within C F D Number twenty-three. The city established C F D Number twenty-three on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty and designated six separate improvement areas at that time. In December twenty twenty-one, a seventh improvement area was designated within C F D Number twenty-three. Improvement Area Number Seven consists of a gross area of approximately seventy-four acres and is located wholly within the city of Folsom, at the southeast corner of Mangini Parkway and Oak Avenue Parkway. Development within improvement area number seven is planned to include two hundred and eleven single-family homes. Property within improvement area number seven is in varying stages of development, including finished lots, home under construction, and completed homes sold to individual homeowners. As of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, Toll Brothers owned one hundred and seventy-six lots. Two. Proceeds from the bonds are expected to finance the acquisition of certain public capital improvements eligible to be financed within improvement area number seven. Capital improvements for improvement area seven include certain roadway improvements, water system improvements, recycled water system improvements, drainage system improvements, wastewater system improvements, park, parkway, and open space improvements, specific plan infrastructure fee program improvements, and certain specific plan infrastructure fee obligations. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Folsom Telegraph on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Policy slash Rule. Resolution Number nine thousand two hundred and eighty-two, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom Approving Goals and Policies for Community Facilities Districts. Chapter three point one one zero, Community Facilities Financing, of the Folsom Municipal Code Melrose Community Facilities Act of nineteen eighty-two. Marx Russe Local Bond Pooling Act of nineteen eighty-five. Analysis. The Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number Seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five. Series twenty twenty-five revenue bonds are being issued by the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, F R F A, in a not-to-exceed amount of twelve million dollars to finance the purchase of the limited obligation special tax bonds, local obligations, issued by C F D Number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch. The purchase price of the local obligations will be used to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities, fund a debt service reserve account, and pay certain costs of issuance of the local obligations and series twenty twenty-five revenue bonds. A special tax will be levied and collected annually to service the local obligations. Every year, C F D Number twenty-three shall determine the annual special tax requirement relating to improvement area number seven. The annual special tax requirement is that amount of special tax revenue required in any fiscal year for improvement area number seven to. Pay administrative expenses. Pay annual debt service on all outstanding bonds for improvement area number seven. Pay other periodic costs on outstanding bonds, including credit enhancement or rebate payments, if applicable. Pay any amounts required to replenish the reserve fund. Pay for reasonably anticipated delinquent special taxes. Fund improvement area number seven pago costs. Pay for authorized services. Pay other associated costs as listed in the rate and method of apportionment. The special tax shall be levied each fiscal year proportionately on each Sacramento County Assessor's parcel of taxable property within improvement area number seven at a rate up to one hundred percent of the applicable maximum special tax to satisfy the annual special tax requirement. The appraised value for taxable property within improvement area number seven is ninety-one million six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars and the value-to-lean ratio is eight point one colon one, which is in compliance with the city's C F D policy. The total projected property tax level for developed residential property within improvement area number seven is approximately one point seven zero percent and shall not exceed two point zero percent of the estimated sales price of the respective homes to be constructed in improvement area number seven. Upon the conclusion of the noticed public hearing, and by adopting the proposed City Council Resolution, the City Council is taking the following actions in connection with the local obligations. One determining that there are significant public benefits to the city from the proposed. Financing and approving the series twenty twenty-five revenue bonds. Two authorizing the issuance of an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed. Twelve million dollar in local obligations. Three approving the form and substance and the execution and delivery of the indenture with. U S Bank Trust Company, National Association. Four approving the form and substance and the execution and delivery of the Continuing Disclosure Certificate. Five approving the form and substance and delivery of the preliminary official statement, and authorizing the preparation, delivery, and execution of a final official statement. Six approving the form and substance and execution and delivery of the local obligation purchase contract. Seven approving the form and substance and execution and delivery of the trust agreement. Eight authorizing the officers of the city to execute any and all documents and instruments, for and on behalf of the city and slash or C F D Number twenty-three, to carry out the issuance of the local obligations. By adopting the proposed F R F A resolution, the Governing Board is taking the following actions in connection with the series twenty twenty-five revenue bonds. One authorizing the issuance of an O I rev. principal amount of not to exceed. Twelve million dollar in series twenty twenty-five revenue bonds. Two approving the form and substance and execution and delivery of the trust agreement. Three approving the form and substance and execution and delivery of the local obligation purchase contract. Four approving the form and substance and execution and delivery of the bond purchase contract. Five approving the form and substance of the preliminary official statement authorizing the treasurer to determine when said preliminary official statement is final, and authorizing the distribution of both the preliminary official statement and the official statement to be distributed by the underwriter. Six authorizing the officers of the F R F A to execute and deliver any and all documents, and to do any and all things deemed necessary to comply with the terms and intent of this resolution. Other documents included as exhibits to this staff report include. Preliminary official statement. Trust Agreement. Indenture. Local Obligation Purchase Contract. Bond Purchase Agreement. Continuing Disclosure Certificate. Good Faith Estimates. The city has engaged the following consultants to assist in the issuance of these series twenty twenty-five revenue bonds. Bond Council, Disclosure Council, Tax Consultant, Financial Advisor, Trustee. O R C, Harrington, and Sutcliffe L L P O R C, Harrington and Sutcliffe L L P N B S. Fieldman, Rolap, and Associates, Inc. U S Bank Trust Company, National Association. Financial Impact. There is no discernible financial impact on the city of Folsom. The C F D Number twenty-three formation, bonded indebtedness, and expenses, including those for improvement area number seven, are solely the responsibility of C F D Number twenty-three. The city will receive reimbursement from the issuance of the series twenty twenty-five revenue bonds for staff time and expenses and will receive an annual administrative fee throughout the term of C F D Number twenty-three. These amounts are intended to offset expenses incurred by the city for administration and other items. Environmental Review. An addendum to the Folsom Plan Area Environmental Impact Report was previously approved for the Toll Brothers at Folsom Ranch Project, P N nineteen dash zero ninety-one, on March tenth, twenty twenty in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, C E Q A. The project is consistent with this addendum to the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan E I R slash E I S, and all mitigation measures have been applied as conditions of approval for this project. In addition, none of the conditions described in section twenty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-six of the Public Resources Code or section fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty-two of the C E Q A guidelines calling for the preparation of a subsequent E I R have occurred. Therefore, no additional environmental review is required under C E Q A. Attachments. One Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and forty-four, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom Authorizing the Issuance of the City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number Area #7 Special Tax Bonds (Series 2025), the execution of an indenture providing therefore, authorizing the execution of a local obligation purchase contract, and authorizing necessary actions and the execution of other documents in connection therewith. 2. Resolution No. 014-Folsom Ranch F.A.: A Resolution of the Governing Board of the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of not-to-exceed twelve million dollar aggregate principal amount of City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area #7 Special Tax Revenue Bonds (Series 2025), approving the form and substance of a trust agreement, authorizing modifications thereof and execution and delivery as modified, approving a: Preliminary Official Statement Authorizing changes thereto and execution and delivery of an official statement to be derived therefrom, approving a local obligation purchase contract and a bond purchase contract and execution and delivery of each, and authorizing related actions necessary to implement the proposed financing. 3. Trust Agreement by and among the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority and the City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, and U.S. Bank Trust Company[681.03][681.03](National Association) as trustee. 4. Indenture between the City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, and U.S. Bank Trust Company (National Association) as trustee. 5. Preliminary Official Statement for the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area #7 Special Tax Revenue Bonds (Series 2025). 6. Local Obligation Purchase Contract for the City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area #7 Special Tax Bonds (Series 2025) between the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority and the City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch. 7. Bond Purchase Agreement for the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area #7 Special Tax Revenue Bonds (Series 2025) between the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority and Piper Sandler &amp; Co. 8. Continuing Disclosure Certificate 9. Good Faith Estimates for the City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area #7 Special Tax Bonds (Series 2024) and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area #7 Special Tax Revenue Bonds (Series 2025). Submitted Stacy T. Magna Finance Director Treasurer of the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Attachment 1 Resolution No. 11344: A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom authorizing the issuance of the City of Folsom Community Facilities District No. 23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area No. 7 Special Tax Bonds (Series 2025), the execution of an indenture providing therefore, authorizing the execution of a local obligation purchase contract, and authorizing necessary actions and the execution of other documents in connection therewith. Whereas, the City Council, the City Council, of the City of Folsom, the city, has formed the City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, the Community Facilities District, and designated various improvement areas therein, including Improvement Area #7, the improvement area, under the provisions of the Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982 (the Act), end. Whereas, the Community Facilities District is authorized under the Act to levy special taxes within the improvement area, thus special taxes, to pay the costs of certain public facilities, the facilities, and to issue bonds payable from the special taxes, end. Whereas, in order to provide funds to finance certain of the facilities, the project, the Community Facilities District proposes to issue not-to-exceed twelve million dollar principal amount of its City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area #7 Special Tax Bonds (Series 2025), the local obligations, end. Whereas, the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, the authority, has agreed to purchase the local obligations pursuant to a local obligation purchase contract, the local obligation purchase contract, between the authority and the Community Facilities District with a portion of the proceeds of the authority's City of Folsom Community Facilities District #23, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area #7 Special Tax Revenue Bonds (Series 2025), the authority bonds, end. Whereas, the City Council has determined in accordance with Government Code Section 53,360.4 that a negotiated sale of the local obligations to the authority in accordance with the terms of the local obligation purchase contract will result in a lower overall cost to the Community Facilities District than a public sale, end. Whereas, there has been submitted to the city clerk of the city, the city clerk, a form of indenture, between the Community Facilities District and U.S. Bank Trust Company (National Association) as trustee, the indenture, providing for the issuance of the local obligations in a form of local obligation purchase contract providing for the sale of the local obligations to the authority, end. Whereas, there has been submitted to the city clerk a form of trust agreement, the trust agreement, among the authority, the Community Facilities District, and U.S. Bank Trust. Resolution #11344: Page 305 Company (National Association) as trustee, providing for the issuance of the authority bonds, end. Whereas, the authority has authorized the sale of the authority bonds to Piper Sandler &amp; Co. as underwriter, the underwriter, with the net proceeds of sale thereof to be utilized to purchase the local obligations from the Community Facilities District, end. Whereas, the Community Facilities District desires to assist the underwriter in its compliance with Rule 15(c)(2-12 promulgated under the Securities Exchange Act of 1934, Rule 15(c)(2-12 pursuant to a continuing disclosure certificate, the continuing disclosure certificate, end. Whereas, the form of a preliminary official statement, the preliminary official statement, to be used in connection with the offering and sale of the authority bonds has been prepared and is on file with the city clerk, end. Whereas, there have been prepared and submitted to the City Council for consideration at this meeting the forms of: A. The trust agreement. B. The indenture. C. The local obligation purchase contract. D. The continuing disclosure certificate, end. E. The preliminary official statement, end. Whereas, the City Council has considered the evidence of the public benefits to the Community Facilities District of the proposed financing and is fully advised in the premises, end. Whereas, the Community Facilities District desires to proceed to issue and sell the local obligations and to authorize the execution of such documents and the performance of such acts as may be necessary or desirable to effect the offering, sale, and issuance of the local obligations, end. Whereas, on this date, the city held a public hearing on the financing of the project in accordance with Section 6,586.5 of Articles 1, 2, 3, and 4 of Chapter 5 of Division 7 of Title I, commencing with Section 6,500 of the Government Code of the State of California, the Marx-Roose Act, end. Whereas, in accordance with Section 6,586.5 of the Marx-Roose Act, notice of such hearing was published once at least five days prior to the hearing in the Folsom Telegraph, a newspaper of general circulation in the city, end. Whereas, Government Code Section 5,852.1 requires that the City Council obtain from an underwriter, financial advisor, or private lender and disclose, prior to authorization of the issuance of bonds with a term of greater than thirteen months, good faith estimates of the following: Information in a meeting open to the public: A. The true interest cost of the bonds; B. The sum of all fees and charges paid to third parties with respect to the bonds; C. The amount of proceeds of the bonds expected to be received net of the fees and charges paid to third parties and any reserves or capitalized interest paid or funded with proceeds of the bonds, end; D. The sum total of all debt service payments on the bonds calculated to the final maturity of the bonds plus the fees, end; charges paid to third parties not paid with the proceeds of the bonds, end. Whereas, in compliance with Government Code Section 5,852.1, the City Council has obtained from Fieldman, Rolap, &amp; Associates, Inc., the municipal advisor to the Community Facilities District, the required good faith estimates and such estimates have been disclosed at this meeting, end. Whereas, the City Council is the legislative body of the Community Facilities District. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Folsom, as follows: Section 1 And determines The foregoing recitals are true and correct, and the City Council so finds. Section 2 The City Council, on behalf of the city, hereby approves the issuance of the authority bonds to finance the project and finds that the use of the Marx-Roose Act to assist the Community Facilities District in financing the project will result in significant public benefits to the citizens of the city, including more efficient delivery of local agency services to residential and commercial development. Section 3 Subject to the conditions described in Section 8, the issuance of the local obligations in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twelve million dollars, on the terms and conditions set forth in, and subject to the limitations specified in, the indenture, is hereby authorized and approved. The local obligations shall be dated, shall bear interest at the rates, shall mature on the dates, shall be subject to redemption, shall be issued in the form, and shall be as otherwise provided in the indenture. Section 4 The form of the indenture providing for the issuance of the local obligations, on jilt, with the city clerk, is hereby approved, and the city manager of the city, the city manager, and the finance director of the city, the finance director, and such other officers of the city as the city manager or the finance director shall designate, each an authorized officer and collectively, they authorized officers, are, and each of them is, hereby authorized, and directed, for and in the name, end. On behalf of the Community Facilities District, to execute and deliver the indenture in substantially said form, with such changes therein as may be approved by the city attorney of the city, the city attorney, such approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof. Section 5 The form of the continuing disclosure certificate, in substantially the form submitted to this meeting and made apart hereof as those set forth in full herein, is hereby approved. The authorized officers are, and each of them is, hereby authorized, and directed, for and in the name of the Community Facilities District, to execute and deliver the continuing disclosure certificate in the form presented to this meeting, with such changes, insertions, end. Omissions as the authorized officer executing the same may require or approve, such requirement or approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution of the continuing disclosure certificate by such authorized officer. Section 6 The preliminary official statement, in substantially the form presented to this meeting and made apart hereof as those set forth in full herein, with such changes therein as may be approved by an authorized officer, is hereby approved, and the use of the preliminary official statement in connection with the offering and sale of the authority bonds is hereby authorized and approved. The authorized officers are, and each of them is, hereby authorized, and directed, for and in the name of the Community Facilities District, to certify to the underwriter that the preliminary official statement has been deemed final for purposes of Rule 15(c)(2-12). Section 7 The preparation and delivery of a final official statement, the official statement, and its use in connection with the offering and sale of the authority bonds is hereby authorized and approved. The official statement shall be in substantially the form of the preliminary official statement, with such changes, insertions, and omissions as may be approved by an authorized officer, such approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof. The authorized officers are, and each of them is, hereby authorized, and directed to execute the final official statement and any amendment or supplement thereto, for and in the name of the Community Facilities District. Section 8 The form of the local obligation purchase contract providing for the sale of the local obligations to the authority, on file with the city clerk, is hereby approved, and the authorized officers are, and each of them is, hereby authorized, and directed, for and in the name of the Community Facilities District, to execute and deliver the local obligation purchase contract in substantially said form, with such changes therein as may be approved by the city attorney, such approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof, provided that the final maturity of the local obligations shall be no later than September 1, 2055, the principal amount of the local obligations shall not exceed twelve million dollars, twelve million dollars, and the true interest cost, taking into consideration the associated underwriters' discount and any original issue premium or discount relating to the authority bonds, of the local obligations shall not exceed six-and-one-half percent, six-point-five-zero percent. Section 9 The form of the trust agreement, in substantially the form submitted to this meeting and made apart hereof as those set forth in full herein is hereby approved. The authorized officers are, and each of them is, hereby authorized, and directed, for and in the name of the Community Facilities District, to execute and deliver the trust agreement in the form presented to this meeting, with such changes, insertions, and omissions as the authorized officer executing the same may require or approve, such requirement or approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution of the trust agreement by such authorized officer. Section 10 Pursuant to Section 53,345.8 of the Act and the city's local goals and policies, the City Council hereby finds and determines that the value of the real property that would be subject to the special taxes to pay debt service on the local obligations will be at least three, three, times the principal amount of the local obligations to be sold and the principal amount of all other bonds outstanding that are secured by a special tax levied pursuant to the Act on Property within the Improvement Area or a special assessment levied on property within the Improvement Area. The City Council determines in its sole discretion that it is necessary and desirable to waive certain of its local goals and policies to the extent the issuance of the local obligations does not conform thereto. Section 11 The officers of the city are hereby authorized and directed, jointly and severally, for and on behalf of the city and/ or the Community Facilities District to do any and all things that they may deem necessary or advisable in order to consummate the transactions herein authorized and otherwise to carry out, give effect to and comply with the terms and intent of this resolution, including any subsequent amendments, waivers, or consents entered into or given in accordance with any of the documents. Approved hereby The city manager, the finance director, the city clerk, and the officers of the city are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver, for and on behalf of the city and/ or the Community Facilities District, any and all certificates and representations necessary and desirable to accomplish the transactions set forth above. Section 12 The City Council hereby approves the execution and delivery of all agreements, documents, certificates, and instruments referred to herein with electronic signatures as may be permitted under the California Uniform Electronic Transactions Act and digital signatures as may be permitted under Section 16.5 of the California Government Code using Docosign. Section 13 This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. Passed and adopted this 25th day of March, 2025, by the following roll call vote: Eyes: Councilmember; S. Knows: Councilmember; S. Absent: Councilmember; S. Abstain: Councilmember; S. Sarah Aquino, Mayor Attest Krista Fremantle, City Clerk Attachment 2 Resolution No. 014-Folsom Ranch F.A.: A Resolution of the Governing Board of the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority authorizing the the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed twelve million dollar aggregate principal amount of City of Folsom Community Facilities District, no. Twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area, no. Seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five, approving the form and substance of a trust agreement, authorizing modifications thereof and execution and delivery as modified, approving a preliminary official statement, authorizing changes thereto and execution and delivery of an official statement to be derived therefrom, approving a local obligation purchase contract and a bond purchase contract and execution and delivery of each, and authorizing related actions necessary to implement the proposed financing. Whereas, the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority is a joint exercise of powers entity duly organized and existing under and by virtue of the laws of the State of California, the authority, end. Whereas, the City Council, the City Council, of the City of Folsom, the city, has formed the City of Folsom Community Facilities District number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, the Community Facilities District, and designated various improvement areas therein, including improvement area number seven, under the provisions of the Melrose Community Facilities Act of nineteen eighty-two, the Act, end. Whereas, the Community Facilities District has completed its legal proceedings under the Act with respect to authorizing the issuance and sale of the City of Folsom Community Facilities District number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area number seven Special Tax Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five, the local obligations, for the purpose of financing certain public facilities within the city south of Highway fifty, end. Whereas, the Community Facilities District is empowered under the provisions of the Act to undertake legal proceedings for the levy of a special tax and for the issuance, sale, and delivery of special tax bonds upon the security of the recorded special tax liens, end. Whereas, the authority is empowered under the provisions of Article four, Chapter five, Division seven, Title one of the California Government Code, the law, to issue its bonds for the purpose of purchasing various local obligations issued by certain local agencies and applying the proceeds of the bonds to finance certain authorized public facilities, end. Whereas, the authority desires to issue the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom Community Facilities District number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area number seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five, the bonds, pursuant to that certain trust agreement, the trust agreement, among the authority, the Community Facilities District, end. U.S. Bank Trust Company, National Association, as trustee, the trustee, in order to provide funds to purchase the local obligations, end. Resolution no. zero fourteen Folsom Ranch Fa, page one of five. Whereas, the authority has determined that the estimated amount necessary to finance the purchase of the local obligations will require the issuance of the bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed twelve million dollars, twelve million dollars, end. Whereas, the authority and the Community Facilities District have determined that all things necessary to make the bonds, when authenticated by the trustee, and issued as provided in the trust agreement, the valid binding and legal obligations of the authority according to the import thereof and hereof have been done and performed, end. Whereas, in furtherance of implementing the financing, there have been filed with the authority secretary for consideration and approval by this board forms of the following: A, a trust agreement, under the terms of which the bonds are to be issued and the revenues, as said term is defined in the trust agreement and as said revenues are received by the authority as holder of the local obligations, are to be administered to pay the principal of an interest on the bonds; B, a local obligation purchase contract, under the terms of which, among other things, the Community Facilities District agrees to sell and the authority agrees to purchase the local obligations; C, a bond purchase contract, under the terms of which, among other things, the authority agrees to sell and the underwriter agrees to purchase the bonds, end; D, a preliminary official statement, describing the bonds and the local obligations, end. Whereas, Government Code Section five thousand eight hundred and fifty-two point one requires that the Governing Board of the authority obtain from an underwriter, financial adviser, or private lender and disclose, prior to authorization of the issuance of bonds with a term of greater than thirteen months, good faith estimates of the following information in a meeting open to the public: A, the true interest cost of the bonds; B, the sum of all fees and charges paid to third parties with respect to the bonds; C, the amount of proceeds of the bonds expected to be received net of the fees and charges paid to third parties and any reserves or capitalized interest paid or funded with proceeds of the bonds; and, D, the sum total of all debt service payments on the bonds calculated to the final maturity of the bonds plus the fees and charges paid to third parties not paid with the proceeds of the bonds, end. Whereas, in compliance with Government Code Section five thousand eight hundred and fifty-two point one, the Governing Board of the authority has obtained from Fieldman, Rolap, and Associates, Inc., municipal adviser to the authority, the required good faith estimates and such estimates have been disclosed at this meeting, end. Whereas, being fully advised in the matter of the proposed financing program, this board wishes to proceed with implementation of said financing program, end. Whereas, all acts, conditions, and things required by the Constitution and laws of the State of California to exist, to have happened and to have been performed precedent to and in connection with the consummation of the financing authorized hereby do exist, have happened, and have been performed in regular and due time, form and manner as required by law, and the authority is now duly authorized and empowered, pursuant to each and every requirement of law, to authorize the execution and delivery of certain documents in order to further implement the financing in the manner and upon the terms herein provided, end. Whereas, as required by the law, the city has conducted a public hearing and has determined that the issuance of the bonds by the authority and the acquisition of the local obligations will result in significant public benefits, including more efficient delivery of local agency services to residential and commercial development. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Governing Board of the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority as follows: Section one, and determines: The foregoing recitals are true and correct, and this board so finds. Section two: Pursuant to the law, the bonds shall be issued in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed twelve million dollars, twelve million dollars. No bond shall mature later than September first, twenty fifty-five. Section three: The form and substance of the trust agreement are hereby approved. The treasurer of the authority or designee thereof is hereby authorized and directed, for and in the name and on behalf of the authority, to execute and deliver the trust agreement in substantially said form, with such changes therein as such officer may require or approve, such approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof. Section four: The form and substance of the local obligation purchase contract is hereby approved. The treasurer of the authority or designee thereof is hereby authorized and directed, for and in the name and on behalf of the authority, to execute and deliver the local obligation purchase contract in substantially said form, with such changes therein as such officer may require or approve, such approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof. Section five: The form and substance of the bond purchase contract is hereby approved. The treasurer of the authority or designee thereof is hereby authorized and directed, for and in the name and on behalf of the authority, to execute and deliver the bond purchase contract in substantially said form, with such changes therein as such officer may require or approve, such approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof, provided that the true interest cost of the bonds shall not exceed six and one-half percent, six point five zero percent, and the underwriters' discount, exclusive of original issue discount, shall not exceed one and one-half percent, one point five zero percent. Section six: A, the form and substance of the preliminary official statement is hereby approved. The treasurer of the authority or designee thereof is authorized to execute the final official statement to be derived therefrom; B, this board hereby authorizes the treasurer of the authority or designee thereof to find and determine that said preliminary official statement in preliminary form is, and as of its date shall be deemed final for purposes of Rule fifteen C two dash twelve of the Securities and Exchange Commission, and the treasurer of the authority or designee thereof is hereby authorized to execute a certificate to such effect in the customary form; C, the treasurer of the authority or designee is authorized to approve corrections and additions to the preliminary official statement by supplement or amendment thereto, by appropriate insertions, or otherwise as appropriate, provided that such corrections or additions shall be regarded by such officer as necessary to cause the information contained therein to conform to facts material to the bonds or the local obligations or to the proceedings of this board or the City Council or that such corrections or additions are in form rather than in substance; D, the underwriter of the bonds is authorized to distribute said preliminary official statement and the final official statement to be derived therefrom in connection with the sale and delivery of the bonds. Section seven: The officers of the authority are hereby authorized and directed, jointly and severally, to do any and all things and to execute and deliver any and all documents, including any agency agreement, which they may deem necessary or advisable in order to carry out, give effect to and comply with the terms and intent of this resolution, including any subsequent amendments, waivers, or consents entered into or given in accordance with any of the documents approved hereby, and to obtain a policy of bond insurance, a rating, and slash or a reserve fund surety policy for any series of the bonds. Such actions heretofore taken by such officers are hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved. Section eight: This board hereby approves the execution and delivery of all agreements, documents, certificates, and instruments referred to herein with electronic signatures as may be permitted under the California Uniform Electronic Transactions Act and digital signatures as may be permitted under section sixteen point five of the California Government Code using Docosign. Section nine: This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage. Passed and adopted this twenty-fifth day of March, twenty twenty-five, by the following roll call vote: Ayes, Boardmember, S. Noes, Boardmember, S. Absent, Boardmember, S. Abstain, Boardmember, S. Sarah Aquino, Chair. Attest. Krista Fremantle, Secretary. Attachment three: Owens Draft, January twenty-second, twenty-five. Trust Agreement by and among the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority and the City of Folsom Community Facilities District, no. Twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, end. U.S. Bank Trust Company, National Association, as trustee, relating to the Dollar L, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, City of Folsom Community Facilities District, no. Twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area, no. Seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five, dated as of April first, twenty twenty-five, forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty-one sixty-eight point two. Table of Contents, page. Article I Definitions. Section one point zero one. Definitions two. Section one point zero two. Rules of Construction ten. Article two. Terms of Authority Bonds. Section two point zero one. Section two point zero two. Section two point zero three. Section two point zero four. Section two point zero five. Section two point zero six. Section two point zero seven. Section two point zero eight. Section two point zero nine. Section two point one zero. Section two point one one. The Authority Bonds L zero. Form of Authority Bonds thirteen. Authority Bonds mutilated, destroyed, stolen, or lost thirteen. Execution of Authority Bonds fourteen. Transfer and registration of Authority Bonds fourteen. Regulations with respect to exchange or transfer of Authority Bonds fifteen. Authentication of Authority Bonds fifteen. Cancellation of Authority Bonds fifteen. Authority Bonds as Special Obligations fifteen. Special covenants as to book entry-only system for Authority Bonds sixteen. Cussip numbers seventeen. Article three. Issuance of Authority Bonds. Section three point zero one. Provisions for the issuance of Authority Bonds nineteen. Section three point zero two. Parity and subordinate bonds eighteen. Article four Redemption of Authority Bonds. Section four point zero one. Section four point zero two. Section four point zero three. Section four point zero four. Section four point zero five. Section four point zero six. Section four point zero seven. Section four point zero eight. General Redemption Provisions twenty. Optional Redemption twenty. Extraordinary Redemption nineteen. Mandatory Redemption twenty-one. Redemption Instructions twenty-one. Notice of Redemption twenty-two. Payment of Redeemed Authority Bonds twenty-one. Purchase in lieu of Redemption twenty-three. Article V. Revenues and Funds for Authority Bonds. Section five point zero one. Establishment of Funds twenty-three. Section five point zero two. Deposit of Proceeds of Authority Bonds twenty-two. Section five point zero three. Proceeds Fund twenty-two. Section five point zero four. Local Obligations Fund twenty-four. Section five point zero five. Revenue Fund twenty-four. Section five point zero six. Revenues derived from Special Tax Prepayments twenty-four. Section five point zero seven. Interest Fund twenty-four. Table of Contents, Continued, page. Section five point zero eight. Section five point zero nine. Section five point one zero. Section six point zero one. Section six point zero two. Principal Fund twenty-three. Redemption Fund twenty-five. Rebate Fund twenty-five. Article six. Security for an Investment of Money. Security twenty-six. Investment of Money twenty-six. Article seven. Covenants of the Authority and the Community Facilities District. Section seven point zero one. Section seven point zero two. Section seven point zero three. Section seven point zero four. Section seven point zero five. Section seven point zero six. Section seven point zero seven. Section seven point zero eight. Section eight point zero one. Section eight point zero two. Section eight point zero three. Section eight point zero four. Section eight point zero five. Section eight point zero six. Section eight point zero seven. Section eight point zero eight. Section eight point zero nine. Section nine point zero one. Section nine point zero two. Section nine point zero three. Section nine point zero four. Section nine point zero five. Section nine point zero six. Section nine point zero seven. Section nine point zero eight. Payment of Authority Bonds, no encumbrances, twenty-seven. Enforcement and Amendment of Local Obligations twenty-seven. Further Documents twenty-eight. Tax Covenants for the Authority Bonds twenty-eight. Maintenance of Existence twenty-nine. Continuing Disclosure twenty-nine. Redemption Fund for the Local Obligations twenty-nine. Concerning the Trust Estate thirty. Article eight Defaults and Remedies. Events of Default thirty-one. Proceedings by Trustee, no acceleration thirty-one. Effect of Discontinuance or Abandonment thirty-two. Rights of Owners thirty-two. Restriction on Owners Action thirty-two. Power of Trustee to Enforce thirty-three. Remedies Not Exclusive thirty-three. Waiver of Events of Default, Effect of Waiver thirty-three. Application of Money Upon Event of Default thirty-three. Article nine The Trustee. Appointment and Acceptance of Duties thirty-five. Duties, Immunities, and Liability of Trustee thirty-five. Mergers or Consolidations thirty-seven. Compensation and Indemnification thirty-eight. Liability of Trustee thirty-nine. Right to Rely on Documents, Adverse Effect Determinations thirty-nine. Preservation and Inspection of Documents forty. Indemnity for Trustee forty. Dash eleven. Table of Contents, Continued. Article X. Execution of Instruments by Owners and Proof of Ownership of Authority Bonds. Page. Section ten point zero one. Execution of Loan Instruments, Proof of Ownership forty. Article eleven Supplemental Trust Agreements. Section eleven point zero one. Supplemental Trust Agreements with Consent of Owners forty-one. Section eleven point zero two. Supplemental Trust Agreements Without Consent of Owners forty-one. Section eleven point zero three. Trustee Authorized to Enter into Supplemental Trust Agreements forty-two. Article twelve Defeasance. Section twelve point zero one. Defeasance forty-two. Section twelve point zero two. Authority Bonds Deemed to Have Been Paid forty-three. Section twelve point zero three. Money Held for Particular Authority Bonds forty-four. Section twelve point zero four. Effect of Defeasance of Authority Bonds forty-four. Article thirteen Miscellaneous Article thirteen Miscellaneous. Section thirteen point zero one. Dissolution of Authority forty-four. Section thirteen point zero two. Parties Interested Herein forty-four. Section thirteen point zero three. Notice forty-four. Section thirteen point zero four. Holidays forty-six. Section thirteen point zero five. Limitation of Liability forty-six. Section thirteen point zero six. Unclaimed Money forty-six. Section thirteen point zero seven. Governing Law forty-seven. Section thirteen point zero eight. Severability of Loan Valid Provisions forty-seven. Section thirteen point zero nine. Counterparts in Electronic Execution forty-seven. Section thirteen point one zero. U.S.A. Patriot Act forty-seven. Section thirteen point one one. Force Measure forty-seven. Exhibit A Form of Authority Bonds. A one. Forty-one forty dash zero seven-two-four dash six I sixty-eight point two. Dash one eleven. Trust Agreement. This Trust Agreement, the Trust Agreement, dated as of April first, two thousand twenty-five, by and among the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, a joint exercise of powers agency duly organized and existing under the laws of the State of California, the Authority, the City of Folsom Community Facilities District number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, organized and existing under and by virtue of the laws of the State of California, the Community Facilities District, and U.S. Bank Trust Company, National Association, A. National Banking Association duly organized and existing under the laws of the United States of America. As trustee, the trustee witnesses. Whereas, the Authority is empowered under the provisions of the Marx-Roose Local Bond Pooling Act of nineteen eighty-five, being Article four, Chapter five, Division seven, Title I of the California Government Code, the law, to issue its bonds for the purpose of purchasing various local obligations, as defined herein, issued by certain local agencies, end. Whereas, the Authority has determined to issue its Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom Community Facilities District number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area number seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, series two thousand twenty-five, the Authority Bonds, to be secured by a pledge, lien, and claim upon the revenues, as that term is defined herein, in order to provide a portion of the funds necessary to purchase the local obligations, as that term is defined herein, end. Whereas, the Authority and the Community Facilities District have determined that all things necessary to make the Authority Bonds, as that term is defined herein, when issued by the Authority and authenticated by the trustee and delivered as provided herein, valid, binding and legal obligations of the Authority according to the import thereof and hereof have been done and performed, end. Now, therefore, this Trust Agreement witnesses, that in consideration of the premises, the acceptance by the trustee of the trusts hereby created and other good and valuable consideration, the receipt of which is hereby acknowledged, and in order to secure the payment of the interest on and principal of and redemption premiums, if any, on all Authority Bonds outstanding, as that term is defined herein, hereunder from time to time according to their tenure and effect, and the making of such other payments required to be made by the Authority and the satisfaction of all the agreements, conditions, covenants, and terms expressed and implied herein and in the Authority Bonds, the Authority does hereby assign, bargain, convey, grant, mortgage, and pledge a security interest unto the trustee and unto its successors and assigns hereunder forever in all right, title and interest of the Authority in, to, and under, subject to the provisions hereof permitting the application thereof for the purposes and on the terms and conditions set forth therein. Each and all of the following, collectively, the trust as date. A, the proceeds of sale of the Authority Bonds. B, the revenues, as that term is defined herein. Forty-one forty dash zero seven-two-four dash sixty-one sixty-eight point two. C, the amounts in the funds, as that term is defined herein, established and held hereunder, except amounts in the rebate fund, end. D, the local obligations. To have and to hold in trust all of the same hereby assigned, bargained, conveyed, granted, mortgaged, and pledged or agreed or intended so to be to the trustee and to its successors and assigns forever for the equal and ratable benefit of the owner issued by the Authority hereunder and authenticated by the trustee and delivered hereunder and outstanding hereunder, without any priority as to the trust estate of any one Authority Bond over any other, except as expressly provided in or permitted. Hereby, upon the trusts and subject to the agreements, conditions, covenants, and terms hereinafter set forth. And this Trust Agreement further witnesses, and it is expressly declared, that all Authority Bonds issued and secured hereunder are to be issued, authenticated, and delivered in all of the rights and property hereby assigned, bargained, conveyed, granted, mortgaged, and pledged are to be dealt with and disposed of under, upon, and subject to the agreements, conditions, covenants, terms, trusts and uses as hereinafter expressed, and the Authority and the Community Facilities District have agreed and covenanted, and do hereby agree and covenant, with the trustee and with the owner, as follows. Article I. Definitions. Section one point zero one. Definitions. The terms set forth below shall have the following meanings set forth herein, unless the context clearly otherwise requires. Act shall mean the Melrose Community Facilities Act of nineteen eighty-two, as amended, being Sections fifty-three thousand three hundred and eleven E.T.S.E.Q. of the Government Code of the State of California, and all laws ammendatory thereof or supplemental thereto. Authority shall mean the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, a joint exercise of powers agency duly organized and existing under the laws of the State of Californey one, M.C.I., its successors and assigns. Authority Bond or Authority Bonds shall mean the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom Community Facilities District number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area number seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, series two thousand twenty-five. Serial Authority Bonds shall mean the Authority Bonds for which no minimum sinking fund payments are provided. Term Authority Bonds shall mean the Authority Bonds which are payable on or before their specified maturity date from minimum sinking fund payments established for that purpose and calculated to retire such Authority Bonds on or before their specified maturity date. Authorized Denominations shall mean five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, and any integral multiple thereof, but not exceeding the principal amount of the Authority Bonds maturing on any one date. Eleven. Forty-one forty dash zero seven-two-four dash sixty-one sixty-eight point two. Authorized Officer shall mean, when used with reference to the Authority, the Chair, the Treasurer, or any other person authorized by the Authority in a written order or resolution to perform an act or sign a document on behalf of the Authority for the purposes hereof, and when used with reference to the Community Facilities District and the City, acting for and on behalf of the Community Facilities District, the Mayor, the Finance Director, or any other person authorized by the City or the Community Facilities District, as applicable, in a written order or resolution to perform an act or sign a document on behalf of the City or the Community Facilities District for the purposes hereof. Bond Counsel shall mean an attorney at law, or a firm of such attorneys, of nationally recognized standing in matters pertaining to the tax-exempt nature of interest on obligations issued by states and their political subdivisions. Bond Register shall mean the registration books specified as such in Section two point zero five. Business Day shall mean any day other than, I, a Saturday or a Sunday or, II, a day on which commercial banks in New York, New York, or the city in which the Corporate Trust Office of the Trustee is located, are closed. Cash Flow Certificate shall mean a written certificate executed by a cash flow consultant. Cash Flow Consultant shall mean a financial consultant or firm of such. Consultants generally recognized to be well-qualified in the financial consulting field relating to municipal securities such as the Authority Bonds, appointed and paid by the Community Facilities District or the Authority and who, or each of whom. One, is in fact independent and not under the domination of the Community Facilities District, the Authority, or the City. Two, does not have any substantial interest, direct or indirect, with the Community Facilities District, the Authority, or the City, end. Three, is not connected with the Community Facilities District, the Authority, or the City as a member, officer or employee of the Community Facilities District, the Authority, or the City, but who may be regularly retained to make annual or other reports to the Community Facilities District, the Authority, or the City. The Cash Flow Consultant shall not, as a result of its role as cash flow consultant, be deemed to have a financial advisory relationship with the Authority within the meaning of California Government Code Section five-three-five-nine-zero, C. Chair shall mean the Chair of the Authority. City shall mean the City of Folsom, a charter city and municipal corporation duly organized and existing under its charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of California, and its successors. City Manager shall mean the City Manager of the City. Code shall mean the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, as amended, and the regulations issued thereunder. Community Facilities District shall mean the City of Folsom Community Facilities District number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, established by the City pursuant to the Act. Corporate Trust Office shall mean the designated Corporate Trust Office of the trustee at the location set forth in Section thirteen point zero three. Dated Date shall mean the applicable date of the original execution and delivery of the Authority Bonds. DDC shall mean the Depository Trust Company, in New York, New York, or, in accordance with then-current guidelines of the Securities and Exchange Commission, such other securities depository as the Authority may designate in an officer's certificate delivered to the trustee. Event of Default shall mean an event of default specified as such in Section eight point zero one. Finance Director shall mean the Finance Director of the City. Fund or Funds shall mean any O.R.R.L., as the case may be, of the Revenue Fund, the Interest Fund, the Principal Fund, the Redemption Fund, the Proceeds Fund, the Local Obligations Fund, and the Rebate Fund, including all accounts therein. Government Obligations shall mean any investment securities described in Clause I, or Clause II, of the definition thereof but excluding any securities that are callable or prepayable prior to the redemption or maturity date of the Authority Bonds to be paid therefrom, and excluding any securities that do not have a fixed P.A.R. value or the terms of which do not promise a fixed dollar amount at maturity or earlier call date. Improvement Area means Improvement Area number seven of the Community Facilities District. Indenture Trustee means U.S. Bank Trust Company, National Association, as trustee under the local obligations indenture. Interest Fund shall mean the fund by that name established pursuant to Section five point zero one. Interest Payment Date shall mean March first and September first in each year. Commencing on September first, two thousand twenty-five. Investment Securities shall mean and include any of the following securities, to the extent permitted by the laws of the State and the City's investment policy, for and on behalf of the Community Facilities District as it may be amended from time to time. I, cash, insured at all times by the Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation or fully collateralized by investment securities described in Clause II, hereof. II, obligations of, or obligations guaranteed as to principal and interest by, the United States of America or any agency or instrumentality thereof, when such obligations are backed by the full faith and credit of the United States of America, including A, all direct or fully guaranteed U.S. Treasury obligations. B, Farmers Home Administration. C, General Services Administration. D, Guaranteed Title XI Financing. E, Government National Mortgage Association, G.N.M.A., end. F, U.S. Treasury, State and Local Government Series. III, obligations of any of the following federal agencies which obligations represent the full faith and credit of the United States of America, including A, Export-Import Bank. B, Rural Economic Community Development Administration. C, U.S. Maritime Administration. D, Small Business Administration. E, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, F.A.S. F, Federal Housing Administration, end. G, Federal Financing Rank. IV, direct obligations of any of the following federal agencies which obligations are not fully guaranteed by the full faith and credit of the United States of America. A, senior debt obligations issued by the Federal National Mortgage Association, F.N.M.A., or Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation, F.H.L.M.C. B, obligations of the Resolution Funding Corporation, R.F.C.O.R.P. C, senior debt obligations of the Federal Home Loan Bank System. End. D, senior debt obligations of other government-sponsored agencies. V, U.S. Dollar-denominated deposit accounts, federal funds, and bankers' acceptances with domestic commercial banks which have a rating on their short-term certificates of deposit on the date of purchase of P. one by Moody's and A. one or A. one plus by S. and P. and maturing not more than three hundred and sixty calendar days after the date of purchase, provided that ratings on holding companies shall not be considered the rating of the bank, or fully collateralized by investment securities described in Clause II, hereof. For amounts in excess of deposit insurance. VI, commercial paper which is rated at the time of purchase in the single highest classification, P. one by Moody's and A. one plus by S. and P. and which matures not more than two hundred and seventy calendar days after the date of purchase. VII, investments in a money market fund rated A.A.M. or A.O.M.G. or better by S. and P., including funds for which the trustee or an affiliate provides investment management or other services but excluding funds with a floating net asset value. VIII, pre-refunded municipal obligations, defined as follows. Any bonds or other obligations of any state of the United States of America or of any agency, instrumentality, or local governmental unit of any such state which are not callable at the option of the obligor prior to maturity or as to which irrevocable instructions have been given by the obligor to call on the date specified in the notice end, A, which are rated, based on an irrevocable escrow account or fund, the escrow, in the highest rating category of Moody's or S. and P. or any successors thereto, or, B, I, which are fully secured as to principal and interest and redemption premium, if any, by an escrow consisting only of cash or obligations described in Clause II, of this definition, which escrow may be applied only to the payment of such principal of an interest and redemption premium, if any, on such bonds or other obligations on the maturity date or dates thereof or the specified redemption date or dates. Pursuant to such irrevocable instructions, as appropriate, end. II, which escrow is sufficient, as verified by a nationally recognized independent certified public accountant, to pay principal of an interest and redemption premium, if any, on the bonds or other obligations described in this paragraph on the maturity date or dates specified in the irrevocable instructions referred to above, as appropriate. IX, any bonds or other obligations of any agency, instrumentality, or local governmental unit of any state of the United States of America which are rated triple-A slash triple-A or general obligations of any such state with ratings of A. two or higher by Moody's and A. or higher by S. and P. X, the local agency investment fund, established under Sections fifty-three thousand six hundred to fifty-three thousand six hundred and nine of the California Government Code, as amended or supplemented from time to time. Law shall mean the Marx-Roose Local Bond Pooling Act of nineteen eighty-five, being Article four of Chapter five of Division seven of Title I of the California Government Code, and all laws ammendatory thereof or supplemental thereto. Letter of Representation shall mean the letter of the Authority delivered to and accepted by the depository on or prior to the issuance of the Authority Bonds setting forth the basis on which the depository serves as depository for such Authority Bonds as originally executed or as it may be supplemented or revised or replaced by a letter to a substitute depository. Local Obligations Fund shall mean the fund by that name established pursuant to Section five point zero one. Local Obligations Indenture shall mean the indenture authorizing and securing the local obligations in pursuant to which the local obligations were issued. Local Obligation Purchase Contract shall mean the purchase contract entered into between the Authority and the Community Facilities District providing for the purchase of the local obligations by the Authority with the proceeds of the Authority Bonds. Local Obligations shall mean the Community Facilities District number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area number seven Special Tax Bonds, series two thousand twenty-five to be issued by the Community Facilities District pursuant to the Act and to be purchased by the Authority pursuant to the law. Mayor shall mean the Mayor of the City. Minimum Sinking Fund Payments shall mean the payments required by Section two point zero one to be deposited in the sinking fund account. Moody's shall mean Moody's Investors Service Incorporated, a corporation duly organized and existing under a corporation duly organized and existing under and by virtue of the laws of the State of Delaware, and its successors or assigns, except that if such entity shall be dissolved or liquidated or shall no longer perform the functions of a municipal securities rating agency, then the term Moody's shall be deemed to refer to any other nationally-recognized municipal securities rating agency selected by the Authority, which shall be under no liability by reason of such selection. Officer's Certificate shall mean a certificate signed by an authorized officer. Opinion of Bond Counsel shall mean a legal opinion signed by a bond counsel selected by the Authority. Outstanding shall mean, with respect to the Authority bonds and as of any date, all Authority bonds authorized, issued, authenticated, and delivered hereunder, except A, Authority bonds canceled or surrendered to the trustee for cancellation pursuant to Section two point zero-eight; B, Authority bonds deemed to have been paid pursuant to Section twelve point zero-two; C, Authority bonds in lieu of or in substitution for which other Authority bonds shall have been authenticated and delivered pursuant to Section two point zero-three, and D, Authority bonds paid pursuant to Section two point zero-three. Owner shall mean, as of any date, the person or persons in whose name or names a particular bond shall be registered on the bond register as of such date. Person shall mean an individual, a corporation, a partnership, an association, a joint stock company, a trust, any unincorporated organization or a government or political subdivision thereof. Principal Fund shall mean the fund by that name established pursuant to Section five point zero-one. Principal Instalment, when used with respect to any principal payment date, shall mean the principal amount of outstanding Authority bonds due on such date. Principal Payment Date, when used with reference to an Authority bond, shall mean the maturity date or the minimum sinking fund payment date for such Authority bond. Proceeds Fund shall mean the fund by that name established pursuant to Section five point zero-one. Section five point zero-one. Rebate Fund shall mean the fund by that name established pursuant to Rebate Instructions shall mean the calculations and directions required to be delivered to the trustee by the Authority pursuant to the tax certificate. Rebate Requirement shall mean the rebate requirement defined in the tax certificate. Record Date shall mean the fifteenth, fifteenth, day of the month preceding any interest payment date, whether or not such day is a business day. Redemption Fund shall mean the fund by that name established pursuant to Section five point zero-one. Responsible Officer of the Trustee means any officer within the global corporate trust department, or any successor group or department of the trustee, including any vice president, assistant vice president, assistant secretary, or any other officer or assistant officer of the trustee customarily performing functions similar to those performed by the persons who at the time shall be such officers, respectively, with responsibility for the administration of this trust agreement. Section five point zero-one. Revenue Fund shall mean the fund by that name established pursuant to Revenues shall mean all amounts received by the trustee as the payment of interest on, or the equivalent thereof, and the payment or return of principal of, or redemption premiums, if any, on, or the equivalent thereof, all local obligations, whether as a result of scheduled payments, or redemption premiums, special tax prepayments or remedial proceedings taken in the event of a default thereon, and all investment earnings on any money held in the funds held hereunder, except the Rebate Fund. S&amp;P shall mean S&amp;P Global Ratings, a business of Standard and Poor's Financial Services LLC, and its successors or assigns, except that if such entity shall be dissolved or liquidated or shall no longer perform the functions of a municipal securities rating agency, then the term S&amp;P shall be deemed to refer to any other nationally-recognized municipal securities rating agency selected by the Authority, which shall be under no liability by reason of such selection. Secretary shall mean the secretary of the Authority. Sinking Fund Account shall mean the account within the Principal Fund by that name established pursuant to Section two point zero-one. Special Tax shall mean the special tax authorized to be levied and collected annually on all taxable property in the improvement area under and pursuant to the Act at the special election held in the Community Facilities District, including both the facility's special tax and the service's special tax, each as defined in the local obligations indenture. Special Tax Prepayments shall mean all payments to the Community Facilities District by or on behalf of the owner of a parcel within the improvement area subject to a special tax to accomplish a payoff of the special tax obligation pertaining to such parcel and the discharge of the special tax lien with respect to such parcel, except the portion thereof, if any, which represents accrued interest on the local obligations. Special Tax Revenues shall mean all money collected and received by the Community Facilities District on account of unpaid special tax obligations within the improvement area, including all amounts collected in the normal course by the Community Facilities District, all special tax prepayments and all amounts received by the Community Facilities District as a result of Superior Court foreclosure proceedings brought to enforce payment of delinquent special taxes within the improvement area, but excluding therefrom any amounts explicitly included therein on account of collection charges, administrative cost charges, or attorney's fees and costs paid as a result of foreclosure actions. Special Record Date shall mean the date established by the trustee pursuant to Section two point zero-one as a record date for the payment of defaulted interest on the Authority bonds. State shall mean the state of California. Supplemental Trust Agreement shall mean any trust agreement supplemental to or amendatory of this trust agreement which is duly executed and delivered in accordance with the provisions of Article eleven. Term Authority Bonds shall mean the Authority bonds which are payable on or before their specified maturity date from minimum sinking fund payments established for that purpose and calculated to retire such Authority bonds on or before their specified maturity date. Tax Certificate shall mean each certificate for the Authority bonds relating to various federal tax requirements, including the requirements of Section one hundred and forty-eight of the Code, signed by the Authority and the Community Facilities District on the dated date, as the same may be amended or supplemented in accordance with its terms. Treasurer shall mean the treasurer of the Authority. Taxable Property shall mean all property within the improvement area taxable under the Act in accordance with the proceedings for the authorization of the issuance of the local obligations and the levy and collection of the special tax. Trust Agreement shall mean this trust agreement dated as of April first, twenty twenty-five, by and among the Authority, the Community Facilities District, and the trustee pursuant to which the Authority bonds are to be issued, as amended, or supplemented from time to time in accordance with its terms. Trust Estate shall have the meaning ascribed thereto in the granting clause hereof. Trustee shall mean U.S. Bank Trust Company, National Association, a national banking association duly organized and existing under the laws of the United States of America, in its capacity as trustee hereunder, and any successor as trustee hereunder. Written Order shall mean, when used with reference to the Authority, a written order or written direction of the Authority to the trustee signed by an authorized officer, and when used with reference to the Community Facilities District, an instrument in writing signed by the city manager or the finance director, or by any other officer of the city duly authorized by the city council, as legislative body of the Community Facilities District, for that purpose. Section one point zero-two. Rules of Construction. Except where the context otherwise requires, all words imparting the singular number shall include the plural number and vice versa, and all pronouns inferring the masculine gender shall include the feminine gender and vice versa. The headings or titles of the several articles and sections hereof and the table of contents appended heretofu shall be solely for convenience of reference and shall not affect the meaning, construction, or effect hereof. All references herein to articles, sections, and other subdivisions or clauses are to the corresponding articles, sections, subdivisions, or clauses hereof, and the words hereby, herein, hereof, hereto, herewith, hereunder, and other words of similar import refer to this trust agreement as a whole and not to any particular article, section, subdivision, or clause thereof. Article Two. Terms of Authority Bonds. Section two point zero-one. The Authority Bonds. The Authority Bonds shall be issued under and secured by this trust agreement and shall be in the form of fully-registered bonds in denominations of five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, or any integral multiple of five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, in excess thereof designated the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom. Community Facilities District Number Twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area Number Seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five and shall be in the aggregate principal amount of F dollars, dollar. The Authority Bonds shall be dated the dated date and shall bear interest at the rates specified in the table below, such interest being payable semiannually on each interest payment date, and shall mature on the principal payment dates in the following years in the following principal amounts, namely remainder of page intentionally left blank. Minimum Sinking Fund Payments are hereby established for the mandatory redemption and payment of the term Authority Bonds, which payments shall become due during the years ending on the dates and in the amounts set forth in the following schedules, except that if any term Authority Bonds have been redeemed pursuant to Section four point zero-two or four point zero-three, the amounts of such minimum sinking fund payments shall be reduced proportionately by the principal amount of all such term Authority Bonds so redeemed, namely all such minimum sinking fund payments for the term Authority Bonds shall be deposited in a separate account in the Principal Fund, which account is hereby established and shall be known as the sinking fund account and which account the Authority hereby agrees in covenants to cause to be maintained by the trustee so long as any term Authority Bonds are outstanding. All money in the sinking fund account on September first of each year during the period beginning on September first, two zero LJ, and ending on September first, two zero L, both years inclusive, shall be used and withdrawn by the Authority on each such September first for the mandatory redemption or payment of the term Authority Bonds maturing on September first, two zero LJ, and all money in the sinking fund account on September first of each year during the period beginning on September first, two zero LJ, and ending on September first, two zero LJ, both years inclusive, shall be used and withdrawn by the Authority on each such September first for the mandatory redemption or payment of the term Authority Bonds maturing on September first, two zero LJ, and the Authority hereby agrees in covenants with the owners of the respective term Authority Bonds to call and redeem in accordance with Section four point zero-four or pay the term Authority Bonds from minimum sinking fund. Payments deposited in the sinking fund account pursuant to this paragraph whenever on September first of any year there is money in the sinking fund account available for such purpose. The interest on and principal of and redemption premiums, if any, on the Authority Bonds shall be payable in lawful money of the United States of America. The Authority Bonds shall be issued as fully-registered bonds and shall be numbered from one, one, upward. The Authority Bonds shall bear interest from the dated date. Payment of the interest on any Authority Bond shall be made to the person whose name appears on the bond register as the owner thereof as of the close of business on the record date, such interest to be paid by check mailed by first-class mail on each interest payment date to the owner at the address which appears on the bond register as of the record date for that purpose, except that in the case of an owner of one million dollars, one million dollars, or more in aggregate principal amount of Authority Bonds, upon written request of such owner to the trustee received not later than such record date, such interest shall be paid on such interest payment date in immediately-available funds by wire transfer to an account in a bank or trust company or savings bank that is a member of the Federal Reserve System and that is located in the continental United States of America. The principal of and redemption premiums, if any, on the Authority Bonds shall be payable by the trustee at its corporate trust office upon presentation and surrender of such Authority Bonds. Interest shall be calculated on the basis of a three sixty-day year consisting of twelve, twelve, thirty-day calendar months, provided, that notwithstanding any other provision herein contained, any interest not punctually paid or duly provided for, as a result of an event of default or otherwise, shall forthwith cease to be payable to the owner on the record date and shall be paid to the owner in whose name the Authority Bond is registered at the close of business on a special record date for the payment of such defaulted interest to be fixed by the trustee, notice of which shall be given to the owner not less than ten, ten, business days prior to such special record date. Section two point zero-two. Form of Authority Bonds. The Authority Bonds and the forms of the certificate of authentication, the assignment, and the DDC endorsement to appear thereon shall be substantially as set forth in Exhibit A hereto, with such variations, insertions, or omissions as are appropriate and not inconsistent herewith. Section two point zero-three. Authority Bonds Mutilated, Destroyed, Stolen, or Lost. In the event any Authority Bond is mutilated, lost, stolen, or destroyed, the Authority may execute and, upon its request in writing, the trustee shall authenticate and deliver a substitute Authority Bond of the same principal amount and maturity as the mutilated, lost, stolen, or destroyed Authority Bond in exchange and substitution for such mutilated Authority Bond, or in lieu of and substitution for such lost, stolen, or destroyed Authority Bond. Application for exchange and substitution of mutilated, lost, stolen, or destroyed Authority Bonds shall be made to the trustee at its corporate trust office. In every case the applicant for a substitute Authority Bond shall furnish to the trustee indemnification to its satisfaction, and in every case of loss, theft, or destruction of an Authority Bond, the applicant shall also furnish to the Authority and the trustee evidence to their satisfaction of such loss, theft, or destruction and of the identity of the applicant, and in every case of mutilation of an Authority Bond, the applicant shall surrender the mutilated Authority Bond to the trustee. Notwithstanding the foregoing provisions of this section, in the event any such Authority Bond shall have matured, and no default has occurred which is then continuing in the payment of the interest on or principal of or redemption premiums, if any, on the Authority Bonds, the trustee shall, upon written direction from the Authority, pay the same, without surrender thereof except in the case of a mutilated Authority Bond, instead of issuing a substitute Authority Bond so long as indemnification is furnished as above provided. Upon the issuance of any substitute Authority Bond, the trustee may charge the owner of such Authority Bond for its reasonable fees and expenses in connection therewith. Every substitute Authority Bond issued pursuant to the provisions of this section by virtue of the fact that any Authority Bond is lost, stolen, or destroyed shall constitute an original additional contractual obligation of the Authority, whether or not the lost, stolen, or destroyed Authority Bond shall be found at any time, or be enforceable by anyone, and shall be entitled to all the benefits hereof equally and proportionally with any and all other Authority Bonds duly issued hereunder to the same extent as the Authority Bonds in substitution for which such substitute Authority Bonds were issued. Section two point zero-four. Execution of Authority Bonds. All Authority Bonds shall, from time to time, be executed on behalf of the Authority by the manual or facsimile signature of the treasurer and attested by the manual or facsimile signature of the secretary. If any of the officers who shall have signed any Authority Bond shall cease to be such officer of the Authority before the Authority Bond so signed shall have been actually authenticated by the trustee or delivered, such Authority Bond nevertheless may be authenticated, issued, and delivered with the same force and effect as though the person or persons who signed such Authority Bond had not ceased to be such officer of the Authority, and any such Authority Bond may be signed on behalf of the Authority by those persons who, at the actual date of the execution of such Authority Bond, shall be the proper officers of the Authority, although on the date of such Authority Bond any such person shall not have been such officer of the Authority. Section two point zero-five. Transfer and Registration of Authority Bonds. The Authority Bonds shall be transferred or exchanged and title thereto shall pass only in the manner provided herein, and the trustee shall keep books constituting the bond register for the registration and transfer of the Authority Bonds as provided herein. All Authority Bonds presented for transfer or exchange shall be accompanied by a written instrument or instruments of transfer or authorization for exchange, in form and with guarantee of signature satisfactory to the trustee, duly executed by the owner or by his or her attorney duly authorized in writing, and all such Authority Bonds shall be surrendered to the trustee and canceled by the trustee pursuant to Section two point zero-eight. The Authority and the trustee shall be entitled to conclusively treat the owner as the absolute owner of such Authority Bond for the purpose of receiving any payment of the interest on or principal of or redemption premium, if any, on such Authority Bond and for all other purposes hereof, whether such Authority Bond shall be overdue or not, and neither the Authority nor the trustee shall be affected by any notice to the contrary. All such payments shall be valid and effectual to satisfy and discharge the liability upon such Authority Bond to the extent of the sum or sums so paid. Fourteen. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash six I sixty-eight point two. Section two point zero-six. Regulations with respect to exchange or transfer of authority Bonds. In all cases in which the privilege of exchanging or registering the transfer of authority bonds is In all cases in which the privilege of exchanging or registering the transfer of authority bonds is exercised, the authority shall execute and the trustee shall authenticate and deliver authority bonds in accordance with the provisions hereof. There shall be no charge to the owner for any such exchange or registration of transfer of authority bonds, but the authority may require the payment of a sum sufficient to pay any tax or other governmental charge required to be paid with respect to any such exchange or registration of transfer. Neither the authority nor the trustee shall be required to register the transfer or exchange of any authority bond during the period established by the trustee for selection of authority bonds for redemption or to register the transfer or exchange of any authority bond selected for redemption. Upon surrender for exchange or transfer of any authority bond at the corporate trust office of the trustee, the authority shall execute and the trustee shall authenticate and deliver in the name of the owner, in the case of transfers, a new authority bond or authority bonds, of authorized denominations, in the aggregate principal amount which the registered owner is entitled to receive. All new authority bonds delivered upon any transfer or exchange shall be valid obligations of the authority, evidencing the same debt as the authority bonds surrendered, shall be secured hereby and shall be entitled to all of the security and benefits hereof to the same extent as the authority bonds surrendered. Section 2.07. Authentication of Authority Bonds. No authority bond shall be secured hereby or entitled to the benefits hereof or shall be valid or obligatory for any purpose unless there shall be endorsed on such authority bond the trustee's certificate of authentication, substantially in the form prescribed herein, executed by the manual signature of a duly authorized signatory of the trustee, and such certificate on any authority bond issued by the authority hereunder shall be conclusive evidence and the only competent evidence that such authority bond has been duly authenticated and delivered hereunder. Section 2.08. Cancellation of Authority Bonds. Upon the surrender to the trustee of any mutilated authority bond, or any authority bond surrendered for transfer or exchange, or any authority bond redeemed or paid at maturity, the same shall forthwith be canceled and the trustee shall destroy such authority bonds and the trustee shall deliver a certificate of destruction with respect thereto to the authority. Section 2.09. Authority Bonds as Special Obligations. The authority bonds are special, limited obligations of the authority, payable from the trust estate and secured as to the payment of the interest on and principal of and redemption premiums, if any, thereon in accordance with their terms and the terms hereof, solely by the trust estate. The authority bonds do not constitute a charge against the general credit of the authority or any of its members, and under no circumstances shall the authority be obligated to pay the interest on or principal of or redemption premiums, if any, on the authority bonds except from the trust estate. None of the community facilities district, the city, the state, any public agency, other than the authority, or any member of the community facilities district or the authority is obligated to pay the interest on or principal. Nineteen. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty-one sixty-eight point two. Of or redemption premiums, if any, on the authority bonds, and neither the faith and credit nor the taxing power of the community facilities district, the city, the state, or any public agency thereof or any member of the authority or the community facilities district is pledged to the payment of the interest on or principal of or redemption premiums, if any, on the authority bonds. The payment of the interest on or principal of or redemption premiums, if any, on the authority bonds does not constitute a debt, liability, or obligation of the community facilities district, the city, the state, or any public agency, other than the authority, or any member of the authority. No agreement or covenant contained in any authority bond or herein shall be deemed to be an agreement or covenant of any officer, member, agent, or employee of the authority in his or her individual capacity, and neither the members of the authority nor any officer or employee thereof executing the authority bonds shall be liable personally on any authority bond or be subject to any personal liability or accountability by reason of the issuance of the authority bonds. Section 2.10. Special Covenants as to Book-Entry-Only System for Authority Bonds. A, except as otherwise provided in subsections, B, and, C, of this section, all of the authority bonds initially issued shall be registered in the name of Seed &amp; Co., as nominee for the depository trust company, New York, New York, DDC, or such other nominee as DDC shall request pursuant to the letter of representation. Payment of the interest on any authority bond registered in the name of Seed &amp; Co. shall be made on each interest payment date for such authority bonds to the account, in the manner and at the address indicated in or pursuant to the letter of representation. B, the authority bonds initially shall be issued in the form of a single authenticated fully registered authority bond for each stated maturity of such authority bonds, representing the aggregate principal amount of the authority bonds of such maturity. Upon initial issuance, the ownership of all such authority bonds shall be registered in the registration records maintained by the trustee pursuant to Section 2.05 in the name of Seed &amp; Co., as nominee of DDC, or such other nominee as DDC shall request pursuant to the letter of representation. The trustee and any paying agent may conclusively treat DDC, or its nominee, as the sole and exclusive owner of the authority bonds registered in its name for the purposes of payment of the principal or redemption price of an interest on such authority bonds, selecting the authority bonds or portions thereof to be redeemed, giving any notice permitted or required to be given to owners hereunder, registering the transfer of authority bonds, obtaining any consent or other action to be taken by owners of the authority bonds and for all other purposes whatsoever, and neither the authority nor the trustee or any paying agent shall be affected by any notice to the contrary. Neither the trustee nor any paying agent shall have any responsibility or obligation to any participant, which shall mean, for purposes of this section, securities brokers and dealers, banks, trust companies, clearing corporations and other entities, some of whom directly or indirectly own DDC, any person claiming a beneficial ownership interest in the authority bonds under or through DDC or any participant, or any other person which is not shown on the registration records as being an owner. With respect to, I, the accuracy of any records maintained by DDC or any participant, II, the payment by DDC or any participant of any amount in respect of the principal or redemption price of or interest on the authority bonds, III, any notice which is permitted or required to be given to owners of authority bonds hereunder, IV, the selection by DDC or any participant of any person to receive payment in the event of a partial redemption of the authority bonds, or, V, any consent given or other action taken by DDC as owner of authority bonds. The trustee shall pay all principal of and premium, if any, and interest on the authority bonds only at the times, to the accounts, at the addresses and otherwise in accordance with the letter of representation, and all such payments shall be valid and effective to satisfy fully and discharge the trustee's obligations with respect to the principal of and premium, if any, and interest on the authority bonds to the extent of the sum or sums so paid. Upon delivery by ODC to the trustee of written notice to the effect that DDC has determined to substitute a new nominee in place of its then-existing nominee, the authority bonds will be transferable to such new nominee in accordance with subsection, E, of this section. C, in the event that the authority determines that the beneficial owners of the authority bonds shall be able to obtain authority bond certificates, the trustee shall, upon the written instruction from the authority, so notify DDC, whereupon DDC shall notify the participants of the availability through DDC of authority bond certificates. In such event, the authority bonds will be transferable in accordance with subsection, E, of this section. DDC may determine to discontinue providing its services with respect to the authority bonds at any time by giving written notice of such discontinuance to the trustee and discharging its responsibilities with respect thereto under applicable law. In such event, the authority bonds will be transferable in accordance with subsection, E, of this section. Whenever DDC requests the trustee to do so, the trustee will cooperate with DDC in taking appropriate action after reasonable notice to arrange for another securities depository to maintain custody of all certificates evidencing the authority bonds then outstanding. In such event, the authority bonds will be transferable to such securities depository in accordance with subsection, E, of this section, and thereafter, all references in this trust agreement to DDC or its nominee shall be deemed to refer to such successor securities depository and its nominee, as appropriate. D, notwithstanding any other provision of this trust agreement to the contrary, so long as all authority bonds outstanding are registered in the name of any nominee of DDC, all payments with respect to the principal of and premium, if any, and interest on each such authority bond and all notices with respect to each such authority bond shall be made and given, respectively, to DDC as provided in the letter of representation. E, in the event that any transfer or exchange of authority bonds is authorized under subsection, B, or, C, of this section, such transfer or exchange shall be accomplished upon receipt by the trustee from the registered owner thereof of the authority bonds to be transferred or exchanged in appropriate instruments of transfer to the permitted transferee, all in accordance with the applicable provisions of Sections 2.05 and 2.06. In the event authority bond certificates are issued to owners other than Seed &amp; Co., its successor as nominee for DDC as owner of all the authority bonds, another securities depository as owner of all the authority bonds, or the nominee of such successor securities depository, the provisions of Sections 2.05 and 2.06 shall also apply to, among other things, the registration, exchange, and transfer of the authority bonds in the method of payment of principal of, premium, if any, and interest. On the authority bonds. Section 2.11. Cussip Numbers. The authority in issuing the authority bonds may use cussip numbers, if then generally in use, and, if so, the trustee shall use cussip numbers. In notices of redemption as a convenience to owners, provided that the trustee shall have no liability for any defect in the cussip numbers as they appear on any authority bond, notice, or elsewhere, and, provided further that any such notice may state that no representation is made as to the correctness of such numbers either as printed on the authority bonds or as contained in any notice of redemption and that reliance may be placed only on the other identification numbers printed on the securities, and any such redemption shall not be affected by any defect in or omission of such numbers. The authority shall promptly notify the trustee in writing of any change in cussip numbers. Article Three. Issuance of Authority Bonds. Section 3.01. Provisions for the issuance of authority bonds. The authority bonds shall be executed by the authority and delivered to the trustee for authentication, together with a written order authorizing and directing the trustee to authenticate the authority bonds and containing instructions as to the delivery of the authority bonds. The trustee shall authenticate and deliver the authority bonds upon receipt of such written order and upon the following having been made available to it: A, a copy of the resolution adopted by the authority approving this trust agreement and the execution and delivery by the authority hereof, duly certified by the secretary to have been duly adopted by the authority and to be in full force and effect on the date of such certification. B, the proceeds of sale of the authority bonds. C, an officer's certificate stating that all conditions precedent to the authorization of the authority bonds have been satisfied and that the authority is not in default in the performance of any of the agreements, conditions, covenants, or terms contained herein. D, an original executed counterpart hereof. E, the local obligations to be purchased with the proceeds of the authority bonds, registered in the name of the trustee, and F, an opinion or opinions of bond council addressing the validity and, if applicable, the tax-exempt status of the authority bonds and the validity of the local obligations, subject to such exceptions as may be reasonable and appropriate. Section 3.02. Parity and Subordinate Bonds. So long as any of the authority bonds remain outstanding, the authority shall not issue any bonds or obligations payable from revenues. Article Four. Redemption of Author. Why Bonds? Section 4.01. General Redemption Provisions. The authority bonds that are subject to redemption prior to maturity pursuant to this trust agreement shall be redeemable, upon mailed notice as provided in this article, at such times and upon such terms as are contained in this article. Section 4.02. Optional Redemption. The authority bonds are subject to optional redemption by the authority prior to their respective maturity dates as a whole or in part on any date on or after September first, two zero LJ, from any source of available funds other than minimum sinking fund payments and special tax prepayments, upon mailed notice as provided herein, at the following redemption prices, computed upon the principal amount of the authority bonds or portions thereof called for redemption, together with accrued interest thereon, to the date fixed for redemption. One hundred and three percent if redeemed on any date on or after September first, twenty underscore, through August thirty-first, twenty underscore J. One hundred and two percent if redeemed on any date from September first, twenty underscore J, through August thirty-first, twenty underscore. One hundred and one percent if redeemed on any date from September first, twenty underscore J, through August thirty-first, twenty underscore, and one hundred percent if redeemed on September first, twenty underscore, and any date thereafter. Section 4.03. Extraordinary Redemption. The authority bonds are subject to extraordinary redemption by the authority prior to their respective maturity dates, as a whole or in part on any interest payment date on or after September first, twenty twenty-five, solely from funds derived from extraordinary redemption of local obligations from special tax prepayments, at the following redemption prices, computed upon the principal amount of the authority bonds or portions thereof called for redemption, together with accrued interest thereon to the date fixed for redemption. One hundred and three percent if redeemed on any interest payment date on or after September first, twenty twenty-five, through March first, twenty underscore. One hundred and two percent if redeemed on September first, twenty underscore J, or March first, twenty underscore J. One hundred and one percent if redeemed on September first, twenty underscore, or March first, twenty underscore, and one hundred percent if redeemed on September first, twenty underscore J, or any interest payment date thereafter. Section 4.04. Mandatory Redemption. The term authority bonds maturing on September first, two zero LJ, are subject to mandatory redemption by the authority prior to their maturity. Date in part on September first of each year on and after September first, two zero LJ, to and including September first, two zero LJ, and the term authority bonds maturing on September first, two zero LJ, are subject to mandatory redemption by the authority prior to their maturity date in part on September first of each year on and after September first, two zero L, to and including September first, two zero LJ from, and in the amount of, the minimum sinking fund payments due and payable for the term authority bonds on each such date, at a redemption price equal to the principal amount thereof plus accrued interest thereon to the date of redemption, without premium. Section 4.05. Redemption Instructions. Upon any prepayment of a local obligation, the authority shall deliver to the trustee at least forty-five, forty-five, days prior to the redemption date a written order of the authority designating the amounts and maturities of the authority bonds to be redeemed, which shall be in the manner necessary to enable the authority to deliver a cash flow certificate satisfying the requirements described below. In the event only a portion of the outstanding authority bonds of any maturity are to be redeemed at any one time, the trustee shall select the particular authority bonds of each maturity date to be redeemed in accordance with DDC procedures, which, at the time of the issuance of the authority bonds, would be a redemption by lot, or, if the authority bonds are not then in book entry, in a manner that it deems appropriate and fair. The trustee shall redeem authority bonds in authorized denominations. The trustee shall promptly notify the authority in writing of the numbers of the authority bonds so selected for redemption on any date. Upon any redemption of a portion but not all of the outstanding authority bonds, the authority shall deliver to the trustee a cash flow certificate to the effect that, assuming all payments are made with respect to the local obligations, I, the revenues, together with monies on deposit in other funds and account held under this trust agreement, will be sufficient to pay all principal installments, minimum sinking fund payments and interest payments on the authority bonds when due, and, II, the redemption premiums, if any, on the local obligations, together with other revenues available to the trustee for such purpose, are sufficient to offset any difference between the interest to accrue on the authority bonds to be paid or redeemed with the proceeds of prepayment of such local obligations, plus any redemption premium payable upon redemption of such authority bonds, and the income to be earned on any investment of such proceeds, assured as of the date of payment thereof, in each case until the date of payment or redemption of authority bonds, such that in no event will the prepayment of local obligations cause the trustee to have insufficient funds to pay debt services such that in no event will the prepayment of local obligations cause the trustee to have insufficient funds to pay debt services on the authority bonds when due. In no event shall authority bonds be redeemed if upon such redemption the principal amount of the local obligations remaining outstanding will be less than the total principal amount of outstanding authority bonds. Such written order of the authority may specify that optional redemption of the authority bonds will be conditioned upon receipt of funds or other events. Section four point zero six. Notice of Redemption. Subject to receipt of the written order of the authority delivered pursuant to section four point zero five, the trustee shall, at the sole cost and expense of the authority, give notice of redemption as hereinafter provided in this section, provided, that authority bonds, identified by cussip numbers, serial numbers, and maturity date, have been called for redemption and, in the case of authority bonds to be redeemed in part only, the portion of the principal amount thereof that has been called for redemption, or if all the outstanding authority bonds are to be redeemed, so stating, in which event such serial numbers may be omitted, that they will be due and payable on the date fixed for redemption, specifying such date, upon surrender thereof to the trustee at its corporate trust office, subject to any conditions to such redemption specified in the written order of the authority, at the redemption price. Specifying such price, together with any accrued interest to such date, and that all interest on the authority bonds, or portions thereof, so to be redeemed will cease to accrue on and after such date and that from and after such date such authority bond, or such portion thereof, shall no longer be entitled to any lien, benefit, or security hereunder, and the owner thereof shall have no rights in respect of such redeemed authority bond or such portion except to receive payment from such money of such redemption price plus accrued interest to the date fixed for redemption. If sufficient monies for the payment of the redemption price of all authority bonds to be redeemed are not then on deposit with the trustee, such notice shall also state that redemption is conditioned upon the timely deposit of sufficient funds therefore with the trustee. Such notice shall be mailed by first-class mail, in a sealed envelope, postage prepaid, at least thirty, thirty, but not more than sixty, sixty, days before the date fixed for redemption, to the owners of such authority bonds, or portions thereof, so called for redemption, at their respective addresses as the same shall last appear on the bond register, provided, that neither the failure of an owner to receive notice of redemption of authority bonds hereunder nor any error in such notice shall affect the validity of the proceedings for the redemption of authority bonds. Any notice of optional redemption hereunder may be rescinded by written notice given by the authority to the trustee no later than three, three, business days prior to the date specified for redemption, instructing the trustee to send such notice of rescission. The trustee shall give notice of rescission of the notice of optional redemption or non-satisfaction of any conditions specified in the notice of optional redemption as soon as practicable to the same parties and in the same manner as the notice of redemption was given pursuant to this section. Section four point zero seven. Payment of Redeemed Authority Bonds. If notice of redemption has been given and not rescinded and if the conditions to such redemption specified therein, if any, have been satisfied, each as provided in section four point zero six, the authority bonds, or the portions thereof, called for redemption shall become irrevocably due and payable on the date fixed for redemption at the redemption price thereof, together with accrued interest to the date fixed for redemption, upon presentation and surrender of the authority bonds to be redeemed at the corporate trust office of the trustee specified in the notice of redemption. If there shall be called for redemption less than the full principal amount of an authority bond, the authority shall execute and deliver and the trustee shall authenticate, upon surrender of such authority bond, and without charge to the owner thereof, authority bonds of like interest rate and maturity in an aggregate principal amount equal to the um deemed portion of the principal amount of the authority bonds so surrendered in such authorized denominations as shall be specified by the owner thereof. If any authority bond or any portion thereof shall have been duly called for redemption and payment of the redemption price, together with unpaid interest accrued to the date fixed for redemption, shall have been made or provided for by the authority, then interest on such authority bond or such portion thereof shall cease to accrue from such date, and from and after such date such authority bond or such portion thereof shall no longer be entitled to any lien, benefit, or security hereunder, and the owner thereof shall have no rights in respect of such authority bond or such portion except to receive payment of such redemption price and unpaid interest accrued to the date fixed for redemption. Section four point zero eight. Purchase in lieu of Redemption. In lieu of redemption of any authority bond pursuant to the provisions of section four point zero two or section four point zero three, and after complying with section four point zero five, amounts on deposit in the proceeds fund, the principal fund or in the redemption fund may be used and withdrawn by the trustee at any time prior to a notice of redemption having been delivered, upon a written order for the purchase of such authority bonds at public or private sale as and when in at such prices as the authority may in its discretion determine, but not in excess of the lower of the highest or then current redemption price thereof plus accrued interest to the purchase date, and all authority bonds so purchased shall be delivered to the trustee for cancellation. Arti. Cleve. Revenues and Funds for Authority Bonds. Section five point zero one. Establishment of Funds. There is hereby established with the trustee, and the trustee hereby agrees to maintain, the following special trust funds for the authority bonds, which the trustee shall keep separate and apart from all other funds and monies held by it: the revenue fund, the interest fund, the principal fund, the redemption fund, the proceeds fund, the local obligations fund, and the rebate fund. Section five point zero two. Deposit of Proceeds of Authority Bonds. The net proceeds received from the sale of the authority bonds, in the amount of dollar, consisting of the principal amount thereof, plus slash less the, net original issue, premium slash discount of dollar, and less an underwriter's discount of dollar, shall be deposited by the trustee in the proceeds fund. Section five point zero three. Proceeds Fund. The amounts in the proceeds fund shall be applied forthwith by the trustee for the purchase of the local obligations pursuant to the local obligation purchase contract in accordance with a written order of the authority whereupon the proceeds fund shall be closed. If any amount shall remain in the proceeds fund following such purchase, such amount shall be transferred to the revenue fund. Section five point zero four. Local Obligations Fund. All local obligations acquired by the trustee pursuant to section five point zero three shall be deposited in the local obligations fund, which the trustee shall establish and maintain. Section five point zero five. Revenue Fund. All revenues received by the trustee, other than revenues derived from the early redemption of local obligations from special tax prepayments, which shall be administered in accordance with section five point zero six, shall be deposited by the trustee in the revenue fund. On each interest payment date and principal payment date, the trustee shall transfer revenues, to the extent that revenues are available therein, from the revenue fund, in the amounts specified in Sections five point zero seven and five point zero eight, for deposit into the respective funds specified therein in the order of priority herein set forth, the requirements of each fund to be fully satisfied, leaving no deficiencies therein, prior to any deposit into any fund later in priority. On each interest payment date and principal payment date, after making the deposits required by Sections five point zero seven and five point zero eight, the trustee shall transfer all remaining money in the revenue fund to the indenture trustee for deposit pursuant to the local obligations indenture. Section five point zero six. Revenues Derived from Special Tax Prepayments. The Community Facilities District and the authority acknowledge that amounts received by the Community Facilities District on account of special tax prepayments are to be utilized for the sole purpose of the prior redemption of local obligations pursuant to section four point zero three, and not to pay current, scheduled debt service payments on the local obligations. Correspondingly, in order to maintain a proper ratio between debt service payments on the local obligations and debt service payments on the authority bonds, all revenues received by the trustee which are derived from the early redemption of local obligations from special tax prepayments when received by the Community Facilities District shall be deposited in the redemption fund and used to redeem the authority bonds pursuant to section four point zero three, in accordance with a written order of the authority, delivered pursuant to section four point zero five. Section five point zero seven. Interest Fund. The trustee shall deposit in the interest fund on each interest payment date from the revenue fund an amount of revenues which, together with any amounts then on deposit in the interest fund, is equal to the interest due on the authority bonds due on such date. On each interest payment date, the trustee shall pay the interest due and payable on the authority bonds on such date from the interest fund. Section five point zero eight. Principal Fund. After satisfying the requirements of the foregoing section five point zero seven respecting deposits in the interest fund, the trustee shall deposit in the principal fund, I, on each principal payment date from the revenue fund an amount of revenues which, together with any amounts then on deposit in the principal fund, other than amounts previously deposited on account of any authority bonds which have matured but which have not been presented for payment, is sufficient to pay the principal installments on the authority bonds due on such principal payment date and, II, on each September first on which a minimum sinking fund payment is required to be made, for deposit in the sinking fund account, from the revenue fund an amount of revenues which is equal to the minimum sinking fund payment due and payable on such date. On each principal payment date, the trustee shall pay the principal or redemption price due and payable on the authority bonds on such date from the principal fund. Section five point zero nine. Redemption Fund. All money held in or transferred to the redemption fund pursuant to section five point zero six shall be used for the purpose of redeeming or purchasing all OR a portion of the outstanding authority bonds pursuant to section four point zero three, and the trustee shall use other monies in the redemption fund for the payment of the redemption price of authority bonds called for redemption pursuant to section four point zero two, together with accrued interest to the redemption date. Section five point one zero. Rebate Fund. The trustee agrees to establish and maintain when needed a fund separate from any other fund established and maintained hereunder designated the rebate fund. The trustee shall deposit in the rebate fund, from funds made available by the authority, the rebate requirement, all in accordance with the rebate instructions received from the authority. The trustee will apply money held in the rebate fund as provided in section seven point zero four and according to instructions provided by the authority. Subject to the provisions of section seven point zero four, all money held in the rebate fund is hereby pledged to secure payments to the United States of America, and the authority and the Community Facilities District and the owners will have no rights in or claim to such money. The trustee will invest all money held in the rebate fund in investment securities as directed in writing by the authority, such written direction to specify which investment securities are to be invested in, and all INB estimate earnings with respect thereto shall be deposited in the rebate fund. Upon receipt of the rebate instructions required by the tax certificate to be delivered to the trustee, the trustee will remit part or all of the balance held in the rebate fund to the United States of America as so directed. In addition, if the rebate instructions so direct, the trustee will deposit money into or transfer money out of the rebate fund from or into such funds as the rebate instructions shall direct. The trustee shall be deemed conclusively to have complied with such provisions if it follows the written directions of the authority including supplying all necessary information in the manner provided in the tax certificate to the extent such information is reasonably available to the trustee, and shall have no liability or responsibility to monitor or enforce compliance by the authority with the terms of the tax certificate. The trustee shall have no obligation to rebate any amounts required to be rebated pursuant to this section, other than from money held in the rebate fund or from other money provided to it by the authority. The trustee shall not be responsible for computing the rebate requirement, and computations of the rebate requirement shall be furnished to the trustee or on behalf of the authority in accordance with the tax certificate. Notwithstanding any other provision hereof, including in particular Article twelve pertaining to defeasance, the obligation to remit the rebate amounts to the United States of America and to comply with all other requirements of this section in the tax certificate shall survive the defeasance or payment in full of the authority bonds. Article six. Security for an Investment of Money. Section six point zero one. Security. All money required to be deposited with or paid to the trustee in any of the funds, other than the rebate fund, referred to in any provision hereof shall be held by the trustee in trust, and except for money held for the payment or redemption of authority bonds or the payment of interest on authority bonds pursuant to section twelve point zero three, shall, while held by the trustee, constitute part of the trust estate and shall be subject to the lien and pledge created hereby. Section six point zero two. Investment of Money. So long as the authority bonds are outstanding and there is no default hereunder, all money on deposit to the credit of the revenue fund, the interest fund, the principal fund, and the redemption fund in all accounts within such funds shall, at the written request of an authorized officer of the authority specifying and directing that such investment of such money be made, be invested by the trustee in investment securities having maturities not later than the date necessary to provide the availability of money when needed for purposes hereof, and all money held in the rebate fund shall, at the written request of an authorized officer specifying and directing that such investment of such money be made, be invested by the trustee in government obligations having maturities not later than the date necessary to provide the availability of money when needed for purposes hereof, and the trustee shall be entitled to conclusively rely on such instructions for purposes of this section. The trustee shall notify the authority in writing prior to the date money held hereunder will be available for investment, requesting that the authority deliver to the trustee written instructions specifying the investment securities to be acquired by the trustee with such money. The authority, in issuing such written instructions, shall comply with the provisions of the tax. Twenty four. Four I forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty one sixty eight point two. Certificate. In the absence of written instructions from the authority regarding investment, such money shall be held uninvested. The trustee, or any affiliate thereof, may act as principal or agent in the acquisition or disposition of any investments. Money on deposit in the proceeds fund, if any, shall be invested in investment securities pursuant to a written order specifying which investment securities to be invested in, and such money may not be reinvested in any other investment securities unless the trustee receives, at the time of such reinvestment, a further written certification to the effect that, after such reinvestment, the revenues will be sufficient to pay principal and interest on the authority bonds when due. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained herein, an amount of interest received with respect to any investment security equal to the amount of accrued interest, if any, paid as part of the purchase price of such investment security shall be credited to the fund from which such accrued interest was paid. The trustee shall not be responsible for any losses, taxes, fees, charges, or consequences of any investment, reinvestment, or liquidation of investment if it follows such instructions. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained herein, the trustee shall have no obligation or responsibility to determine whether investment in a security is permitted by the laws of the state and the city's investment policy, for and on behalf of the Community Facilities District, and shall be entitled to conclusively assume that any investment it is directed to make is so permitted. The securities purchased with the money in each fund shall be deemed a part of such fund. If at any time it shall become necessary or appropriate that some OR all of the securities purchased with the money in any fund be redeemed or sold in order to raise money necessary to comply with the provisions hereof, the trustee shall effect such redemption or sale, employing, in the case of a sale, any commercially reasonable method of effecting the same. The trustee shall not be liable or responsible for any consequences, fees, taxes, or other charges resulting from any such investment or resulting from the redemption, sale, or maturity of any such investment as authorized pursuant to this section. Investments in the revenue fund, the interest fund, the principal fund, and the redemption fund may be commingled for purposes of making, holding, and disposing of investments, notwithstanding provisions herein for transfer to or holding in particular funds amounts received or held by the trustee, provided, that the trustee shall at all times account for such investments strictly in accordance with the funds to which they are credited and otherwise as provided herein. All earnings on the investment of the money on deposit in any fund shall remain a part of such fund. Article seven. Covenants of the Authority and the Community Facilities District. Section seven point zero one. Payment of Authority Bonds. No encumbrances. The authority shall cause the trustee to promptly pay, from revenues and other funds derived from the trust. Twenty five. Forty one forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty one sixty eight point two. Estate pledged hereunder, the interest on and principal of and redemption premium, if any, on every authority bond issued under and secured hereby at the place, on the dates and in the manner specified herein and in such authority on the dates and in the manner specified herein and in such authority bonds according to the true intent and meaning thereof. The authority shall not issue any bonds, notes or other evidences of indebtedness or incur any obligations payable from or secured by the trust estate, other than the authority bonds. Section seven point zero two. Enforcement and Amendment of Local Obligations. The authority, the Community Facilities District and the trustee, subject to Article nine hereof, shall enforce all of their rights with respect to the local obligations to the fullest extent necessary to preserve the rights and protect the security of the owners hereunder. The authority, the Community Facilities District and the trustee may, without the consent of or notice to the owners of the authority bonds, consent to any amendment, change, or modification of any local obligation that may be required, A, to conform to the provisions hereof, including any modifications or changes contained in any supplemental trust agreement, B, for the purpose of curing any ambiguity or inconsistency or formal defect or omission, C, to add additional rights acquired in accordance with the provisions of such local obligation, D, in connection with any other change therein that is not to the material prejudice of the owners of the authority bonds, or, E, in the opinion of bond council, to preserve or assure the exemption of interest on the local obligations or authority bonds from federal income taxes or the exemption of such interest from state personal income taxes. Except for the amendments, changes, or modifications provided for in the preceding paragraph, neither the authority, the Community Facilities District nor the trustee shall consent to any amendment, change, or modification of any local obligation without the written approval or consent of the owners of not less than a majority in aggregate principal amount of authority bonds at the time outstanding given and procured as provided in this section. If at any time the authority and the Community Facilities District, as the case may be, shall request the consent of the trustee to any such proposed amendment, change, or modification of a local obligation, the trustee shall, upon being satisfactorily indemnified with respect to expenses, cause notice, prepared by the authority, of such proposed amendment, change, or modification to be mailed in the same manner as provided by section thirteen point zero three. Such notice shall briefly set forth the nature of such proposed amendment, change, or modification and shall state that copies of the instrument embodying the same are on file with the trustee for inspection by all owners. Section seven point zero three. Further Documents. The authority covenants that it will from time to time execute and deliver such further instruments and take such further action as may be reasonable and as may be required to carry out the purpose hereof, provided, that no such instruments or actions shall pledge the faith and credit or the taxing power of the state or any political subdivision of the state. Section seven point zero four. Tax Covenants for the Authority Bonds. A, the authority and the Community Facilities District will not take any action, or fail to take any action, if any such action or failure to take action would adversely affect the exclusion from gross income of interest on the authority bonds under section one hundred and three of the code. The authority and the Community Facilities District will not directly or indirectly use or permit the use of any proceeds of the authority bonds or any other funds of the authority or take or omit. Twenty-six. Four leaders forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty-one sixty-eight point two. To take any action that would cause the authority bonds to be private activity bonds within the meaning of section one forty-one, A, of the code or obligations which are federally guaranteed within the meaning of section one forty-nine, B, of the code. The authority will not allow ten percent, ten percent, or more of the proceeds of the authority bonds to be used in the trade or business of any non-governmental units and will not lend five percent, five percent, or more of the proceeds of the authority bonds to any non-governmental units. B, the authority and the Community Facilities District will not directly or indirectly use or permit the use of any proceeds of the authority bonds or any other funds of the authority or take or omit to take any action that would cause the authority bonds to be arbitrage bonds within the meaning of section one hundred and forty-eight of the code. To that end, the authority and the Community Facilities District will comply with all requirements of section one hundred and forty-eight of the code to the extent applicable to the authority bonds. In the event that at any time the authority is of the opinion that for purposes of this section it is necessary to restrict or to limit the yield on the investment of any money held by the trustee hereunder, the authority will so instruct the trustee in writing, and the trustee will take such actions as directed by such instructions. C, the authority will pay or cause to be paid the rebate requirement as provided in the tax certificate. This covenant shall survive payment in full or defeasance of the authority bonds. The authority will cause the rebate requirement to be deposited in the rebate fund as provided in the tax certificate, which is incorporated herein by reference. D, the trustee will conclusively be deemed to have complied with the provisions of this section and the provisions of the tax certificate and shall incur no liability if it follows the directions of the authority set forth in the tax certificate and the rebate instructions and shall not be required to take any actions hereunder in the absence of rebate instructions from the authority. E, notwithstanding any provision of this section, if the authority shall provide to the trustee an opinion of bond council that any specified action required under this section is no longer required or that some further or different action is required to maintain the exclusion from gross income for federal income tax purposes of interest with respect to the authority bonds, the trustee, and the authority and the Community Facilities District may conclusively rely on such opinion in complying with the requirements of this section, and the covenants hereunder shall be deemed to be modified to that extent. F, the provisions of this section shall survive the defeasance of the authority bonds. Section seven point zero five. Maintenance of Existence. The authority shall maintain the existence, powers, and authority of the authority as a joint exercise of powers authority under the laws of the state. Section seven point zero six. Continuing Disclosure. The Community Facilities District has undertaken all responsibility for compliance with continuing disclosure requirements, and the authority shall have no liability to the owners of the authority bonds or any other person with respect to S E C Rule fifteen C two dash twelve. Notwithstanding any other provision hereof, failure of the Community Facilities District to comply with any continuing disclosure obligation shall not be considered an event of default, provided, that any owners of the authority bonds are beneficial. Twenty-eight. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty-one sixty-eight point two. Owner may take such actions as may be necessary and appropriate, including seeking mandate or specific performance by court order, to cause the Community Facilities District to comply with its continuing disclosure obligations. Section seven point zero seven. Redemption Fund for the Local Obligations. A, the Community Facilities District expressly acknowledges that, pursuant to the local obligations indenture, the Community Facilities District is to establish and maintain a separate redemption fund for the local obligations, the Local Obligations Redemption Fund, and, so long as the local obligations remain outstanding, to deposit into such local obligations redemption fund, upon receipt, any and all special tax revenues received by the Community Facilities District in connection with the local obligations. The Community Facilities District further acknowledges that no temporary loan or other use whatsoever may be made of special tax revenues, and that the Local Obligations Redemption Fund constitutes a trust fund for the benefit of the owners of the local obligations. B, the Community Facilities District hereby covenants for the benefit of the authority, as owner of the local obligations, the trustee, as assignee of the authority with respect to the revenues, and the owners from time to time of the authority bonds, that it will establish, maintain, and administer the local obligations redemption fund and the special tax revenues in accordance with their status as trust funds as prescribed by the Act, the local obligations indenture and this trust agreement. C, the Community Facilities District further covenants that, no later than one, one, business day prior to each interest payment date and principal payment date of the authority bonds, the Community Facilities District will advance to the trustee against payment on the local obligations, as assignee of the authority with respect to the local obligations, the interest due on the local obligations on such interest payment date and the principle of all local obligations maturing on such principle. Payment date, respectively, and upon receipt by the trustee, such amounts shall constitute revenues. For so long as authority bonds remain outstanding, the trustee shall provide written notice to the authority no later than fifteen, fifteen, days prior to each interest payment date specifying the amount required to be paid to the trustee pursuant to this subsection in the month subsequent thereto. Section seven point zero eight. Warrants as follows. Concerning the trust estate. The authority hereby represents and A, this trust agreement creates a valid and binding pledge of insecurity interest in the trust estate in favor of the trustee in order to secure the payment of the interest on and principle of and redemption premiums, if any, on all authority bonds outstanding hereunder, enforceable by the trustee in accordance with the terms hereof. B, under the laws of the State of California, one, such pledge of insecurity interest in the trust estate and, two, each pledge, assignment, lien, or other security interest made to secure any prior obligations of the authority which, by the terms hereof, ranks on parity with or prior to the pledge of insecurity interest granted hereby, are and shall be prior to any judicial lien hereafter imposed on such collateral to enforce a judgment against the authority on a simple contract. C, the authority has not hereto formate a pledge of, granted a lien on or security interest in, or made an assignment or sale of the trust estate that ranks on parity with or prior to the pledge and security interest granted hereby, except for the pledge and security interest granted to secure the authority bonds. The authority shall not hereafter make or suffer to exist any pledge or assignment of, lien on, or security interest in such collateral that ranks prior to or on parity with the pledge and security interest granted hereby, or file any financing statement describing any such pledge, assignment, lien, or security interest, except as expressly permitted hereby. Article eight. Defaults and Remedies. Section eight point zero one. Default Hereunder. Events of Default. The following shall constitute events of A, if payment of interest on the authority bonds shall not be made when due, or B, if payment of any principal installment or minimum sinking fund payment shall not be made when due and payable, whether at maturity, by proceedings for redemption, or otherwise, or C, if the authority or the Community Facilities District shall fail to observe or perform in any material way any other agreement, condition, covenant, or term contained herein on its part to be observed or performed, and such failure shall continue for thirty, thirty, days after written notice specifying such failure and requiring the same to be remedied shall have been given to the authority or the Community Facilities District, as the case may be, by the trustee or by the owners of not less than fifty percent, fifty percent, in aggregate principal amount of the authority bonds, provided, that if such default be such that it cannot be corrected within the applicable period, it shall not constitute an event of default if corrective action is instituted by the authority or the Community Facilities District within the applicable period and diligently pursued until the default is corrected, or D, if there is an event of default under the local obligations indenture. Section eight point zero two. Proceedings by Trustee, No Acceleration. Upon the happening and continuance of any event of default the trustee may, or at the written request of the owners of not less than fifty percent, fifty percent, in aggregate principal amount of authority bonds outstanding, shall, but only if indemnified to its satisfaction from any liability, expense, or cost, do the following: A, by mandamus, or other suit, action, or proceeding at law or inequity, enforce all rights of the owners, including the right to receive and collect the revenues. B, bring suit upon or otherwise enforce any defaulting local obligation. C, by action or suit inequity and join any acts or things which may be unlawful or in violation of the rights of the owners. D, as a matter off right, have a receiver or receivers appointed for the trust estate and of the earnings, income, issues, products, profits, and revenues thereof pending such proceedings, with such powers as the court making such appointment shall confer, and E, take such action with respect to any and all j-ocal obligations or investment securities as shall be necessary and appropriate, subject to section eight point zero four and to the terms of such local obligations or investment securities. The trustee shall have no right to declare the principle of all of the authority bonds then outstanding, or the interest accrued thereon, to be due and payable immediately. Section eight point zero three. Effect of Discontinuance or Abandonment. In case any proceeding taken by the trustee on account of any event of default shall have been discontinued or abandoned for any reason, or shall have been determined adversely to the trustee, then and in every such case the trustee and the owners shall be restored to their former positions and rights hereunder, respectively, and all rights, remedies, and powers of the trustee shall continue as though no such proceeding had been taken. Section eight point zero four. Rights of Owners. Anything herein to the contrary notwithstanding, but subject to the limitations and restrictions as to the rights of the owner contained in sections eight point zero one, eight point zero two, and eight point zero five, upon the happening and continuance of any event of default, the owners of not less than fifty percent, fifty percent, in aggregate principal amount of the authority bonds then outstanding shall have the right, upon providing the trustee security and indemnity reasonably satisfactory to it against the costs, expenses, and liabilities to be incurred therein or thereby, by an instrument in writing executed and delivered to the trustee, have the right to direct the method and place of conducting all remedial proceedings to be taken by the trustee hereunder. The trustee may refuse to follow any direction that conflicts with law or herewith or that the trustee determines would subject the trustee to personal liability without adequate indemnification therefore. Section eight point zero five. Restriction on Owners' Action. In addition to the other restrictions on the rights of owners to request action upon the occurrence of an event of default and to enforce remedies set forth in this article, no owner shall have any right to institute any suit, action, or proceeding inequity or at law for the enforcement of any trust hereunder, or any other remedy hereunder or in the authority bonds, unless such owner previously shall have given to the trustee written notice of an event of default as herein above provided and unless the owners of not less than fifty percent, fifty percent, in aggregate principal amount of the authority bonds then outstanding shall have made written request of the trustee to institute any such suit, action, proceeding, or other remedy, after the right to exercise such powers or rights of action, as the case may be, shall have accrued, and shall have afforded the trustee a reasonable opportunity either to proceed to exercise the powers granted herein, or to institute such action, suit, or proceeding in its O R their name, nor unless there also shall have been offered to the trustee security and indemnity reasonably. Thirty. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash six one six eight two. Satisfactory to it against the costs, expenses, and liabilities to be incurred therein or thereby, and the trustee shall not have complied with such request within a reasonable time, and such notification, request, and offer of indemnity are hereby declared in every such case to be conditions precedent to the execution of the trusts hereof or for any other remedy hereunder, it being understood and intended that no one or more owners of authority bonds secured hereby shall have any right in any manner whatever by his, her, O R their action to affect, disturb, or prejudice the security hereof, or to enforce any rights hereunder or under the authority bonds, except in the manner provided herein, and that all proceedings at law or inequity shall be instituted, had, and maintained in the manner provided herein, and for the equal benefit of all owners of outstanding authority bonds, subject, however, to the provisions of this section. Notwithstanding the foregoing provisions of this section or any other provision hereof, the obligation of the authority shall be absolute and unconditional to pay, but solely from the trust estate, the interest on and principle of and redemption premiums, if any, on the authority bonds to the respective owners thereof at the respective due dates thereof, and nothing herein shall affect or impair the right of action, which is absolute and unconditional, of such owners to enforce such payment. Section eight point zero six. Power of Trustee to Enforce. All rights of action hereunder or under any of the authority bonds secured hereby which are enforceable by the trustee may be enforced by it without the possession of any of the authority bonds, or the production thereof at the trial or other proceedings relative thereto, and any such suit, action, or proceedings instituted by the trustee shall be brought in its own name, as trustee, for the equal and ratable benefit of the owners subject to the provisions hereof. Section eight point zero seven. Remedies Not Exclusive. No remedy herein conferred upon or reserved to the trustee or to the owners is intended to be exclusive of any other remedy or remedies, and each and every such remedy shall be cumulative, and shall be in addition to every other remedy given hereunder or now or hereafter existing at law or inequity or by statute. Section eight point zero eight. Waiver of Events of Default, Effect of Waiver. Upon the written request of the owners of at least a majority in aggregate principal amount of all outstanding authority bonds, the trustee shall waive any event of default hereunder and its consequences. If any event of default shall have been waived as herein provided, the trustee shall promptly give written notice of such waiver to the authority and the community facilities district and shall give notice thereof by first-class mail, postage prepaid, to all owners of outstanding authority bonds if such owners had not previously been given notice of such event of default, but no such waiver, rescission, and annulment shall extend to or affect any subsequent event of default, or impair any right or remedy consequent thereon. No delay or omission of the trustee or of any owner to exercise any right or power accruing upon any event of default shall impair any such right or power or shall be construed to be a waiver of any such event of default, or an acquiescence therein, and every power and remedy given by this article to the trustee and to the owners may be exercised from time to time and as often as may be deemed expedient. Section eight point zero nine. Application of money upon event of default. Any money received by the trustee pursuant to this article shall, after payment of all fees and expenses of the trustee, and the fees and expenses of its counsel incurred in representing the owners, be applied as follows: Thirty-one. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty-one sixty-eight point two. A) Payable. Unless the principal of all of the outstanding authority bonds shall be due and first, to the payment of the owners entitled thereto of all installments of interest then due on the authority bonds, in the order of the maturity of the installments of such interest, and if the amount available shall not be sufficient to pay in full any particular installment, then to the payment ratably, according to the amounts due on such installment, to the persons entitled thereto, without any discrimination or privilege; second, to the payment of the owners entitled thereto of the unpaid principal of and redemption premiums, if any, on any of the authority bonds which shall have become due, other than authority bonds matured or called for redemption for the payment of which money is held pursuant to the provisions hereof, in the order of their due dates, and if the amount available shall not be sufficient to pay in full the principal of and redemption premiums, if any, on such authority bonds due on any particular date, then to the payment ratably, according to the amount due on such date, to the owners entitled thereto without any discrimination or privilege, and third, to be held for the payment to the owners entitled thereto as the same shall become due of the interest on and principal of and redemption premiums, if any, on the authority bonds which may thereafter become due, either at maturity or upon call for redemption prior to maturity, and if the amount available shall not be sufficient to pay in full such interest and principal and redemption premiums, if any, due on any particular date, payment shall be made in accordance with the first and Second paragraphs hereof. B) If the principal of all of the outstanding authority bonds shall be due and payable, to the payment of the interest on and principal of and redemption premiums, if any, due on all outstanding authority bonds without preference or priority of or of any interest on any outstanding authority bond over any other outstanding authority bond, any principal of or the redemption premium, if any, on any outstanding authority bond or of any other outstanding authority bond, ratably, according to the amounts due respectively for interest and principal and redemption premiums, if any, to the owners entitled thereto without any discrimination or preference except as to any difference in the respective amounts of interest specified in the outstanding authority bonds. Article nine. The trustee. Section nine point zero one. Appointment and acceptance of duties. The trustee hereby accepts and agrees to the trusts hereby created to all of which the authority agrees and the respective owners of the authority bonds, by purchase, and acceptance thereof, agree. Section nine point zero two. Duties, immunities, and liability of trustee. The trustee shall, prior to an event of default, and after the curing or waiver of all events of default which may have occurred, perform such duties and only such duties as are specifically set forth herein, and no implied duties or obligations shall be read herein against the trustee. The trustee shall, during the existence of any event of default, which has not been cured or waived, exercise such of the rights and powers vested in it hereby and use the same degree of care and skill in their exercise as a prudent person would exercise under the circumstances in the conduct of his or her own affairs. In the absence of an event of default, the authority may remove the trustee. The authority shall remove the trustee if: a) It receives an instrument or concurrent instruments in writing signed by the owners of not less than a majority in aggregate principal amount of the authority bonds then outstanding, or their attorneys duly authorized in writing, or b) At any time the trustee shall cease to be eligible in accordance with this section, or c) The trustee shall become incapable of acting, or d) The trustee shall commence a case under any bankruptcy, insolvency, or similar law, or e) A receiver of the trustee or of its property shall be appointed, or f) Any public officer shall take control or charge of the trustee or its property or affairs for the purpose of rehabilitation, conservation, or liquidation. To effect any such removal, the authority shall give written notice thereof to the trustee, and thereupon the authority, with the concurrence of the community facilities district, shall promptly appoint a successor trustee by an instrument in writing. The trustee may, subject to the next following paragraph of this section, resign by giving written notice of such resignation by mail, first-class postage prepaid, to the authority, the community facilities district, and the owners at the respective addresses listed in the bond register. Upon receiving such notice of resignation, the authority, with the concurrence of the community facilities district, shall promptly appoint, by an instrument in writing, a successor trustee. Any removal or resignation of the trustee and appointment of a successor trustee shall become effective only upon acceptance of the successor trustee by the authority and the community facilities district and acceptance of appointment by the successor trustee. If no successor trustee shall have been appointed and shall have accepted appointment within thirty thirty days of giving notice of removal or notice of resignation as aforesaid, the resigning trustee or any owner, on behalf of himself and all other owners, may petition, at the expense of the community facilities district, any court of competent jurisdiction for the appointment of a successor trustee, and such court may thereupon, after such notice, if any, as it may deem proper, appoint such successor trustee. Any successor trustee appointed under this trust agreement shall signify its acceptance of such appointment by executing and delivering to the authority and the community facilities district and to its predecessor trustee a written acceptance thereof, and Thirty-three. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash six one six eight two. Thereupon such successor trustee, without any further act, deed, or conveyance, shall become vested with all the money, estates, properties, rights, powers, trusts, duties, and obligations of such predecessor trustee, with like effect as if it were originally named trustee herein, but, nevertheless, at the written request of the authority or the community facilities district or the successor trustee, such predecessor trustee shall execute and deliver any and all instruments of conveyance or further assurance and do such other things as may reasonably be required for more fully and certainly vesting in and confirming to such successor trustee all the right, title, and interest of such predecessor trustee in and to any property held by it hereunder and shall pay over, transfer, assign, and deliver to the successor trustee any money or other property subject to the trusts and conditions herein set forth. Upon request of the successor trustee, the authority, and the community facilities district shall execute and deliver any and all instruments as may be reasonably required for more fully and certainly vesting in and confirming to such successor trustee all such money, estates, properties, rights, powers, trusts, duties, and obligations. Upon acceptance of appointment by a successor trustee as provided in this subsection, such successor trustee shall mail a notice of the succession of such successor trustee to the trusts hereunder by first-class mail, postage prepaid, to the owners at their respective addresses listed in the bond register. Any successor trustee appointed under the provisions of this section shall be a trust company or bank having the powers of a trust company, having a designated corporate trust office in California, and with a combined capital and surplus of at least one hundred million dollars, one hundred million dollars, and being subject to supervision or examination by federal or state authority, and if such bank or trust company publishes a report of condition at least annually, pursuant to law or to the requirements of any supervising or examining authority above referred to, then for the purpose of this subsection the combined capital and surplus of such bank or trust company shall be deemed to be its combined capital and surplus as set forth in its most recent report of conditions so published. In case at any time the trustee shall cease to be eligible in accordance with the provisions of this subsection, the trustee shall resign promptly in the manner and with the effects specified in this section. No provision herein shall require the trustee to risk or expend its own funds or otherwise incur any financial liability in the performance of any of its duties hereunder unless the owners shall have offered to the trustee indemnity it deems reasonable, against the costs, expenses, and liabilities that may be incurred. The trustee shall be entitled to interest on all money advanced by it hereunder at its prime rate then in effect plus two percent, two percent, but not to exceed the maximum interest rate permitted by the laws of the state. In accepting the trust hereby created, the trustee is acting solely as trustee for the owners and not in its individual capacity, and under no circumstances shall the trustee be liable in its individual capacity for the obligations evidenced by the authority bonds. The trustee makes no representation or warranty, express, or implied, as to the compliance with legal requirements of the use contemplated by the authority or the community facilities district of the funds hereunder including, without limitation, the purchase of the local obligations hereunder, provided, that the trustee shall not acquire local obligations other than pursuant to the provisions of sections five point zero three and five point zero four. Thirty-eight. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty-one sixty-eight point two. In no event shall the trustee be responsible or liable for special, indirect, punitive, or consequential loss or damage of any kind whatsoever, including, but not limited to, loss of profit, irrespective of whether the trustee has been advised of the likelihood of such loss or damage and regardless of the form of action. The trustee shall not be responsible for the validity or effectiveness or value of any collateral or security securing any local obligation. The trustee shall not be responsible for the recording or filing of any document relating hereto or any local obligation or of financing statements, or amendments or continuation statements in connection therewith, or mortgage or of any supplemental instruments or documents of further assurance as may be required by law in order to perfect the security interests or lien on or in any collateral or security securing any local obligation. The trustee shall not be deemed to have made representations as to the security afforded thereby or as to the validity or sufficiency of any such document, collateral, or security. The trustee shall not be deemed to have knowledge of any event of default hereunder unless and until a responsible officer of the trustee shall have actual knowledge thereof at its corporate trust office. The trustee shall not be accountable for the use or application by the authority or the community facilities district or any other party of any funds which the trustee has released hereunder. The trustee shall provide a monthly accounting of all funds held pursuant hereto to the authority within fifteen, fifteen business days after the end of such month and shall provide statements of account for each annual period beginning July first and ending June thirtieth, within ninety, ninety days after the end of such period. Such accounting shall show in reasonable detail all financial transactions during the accounting period and the balance in any accounts and funds, including the local obligations fund, created hereunder as of the beginning and the close of such accounting period. The trustee shall furnish the authority periodic cash transaction statements which include detail for all investment transactions affected by the trustee or brokers selected by the authority. Upon the authority's election, such statements will be delivered via the trustee's online service and upon electing such service, paper statements will be provided only upon request. The authority waives the right to receive brokerage confirmations of security transactions affected by the trustee as they occur, to the extent permitted by law. The authority further understands that trade confirmations for securities transactions affected by the trustee will be available upon request and at no additional cost and other trade confirmations may be obtained from the applicable broker. Section nine point zero three. Mergers or consolidation. Any company into which the trustee may be merged or converted or with which it may be consolidated or any company resulting from any merger, conversion, or consolidation to which it shall be a party or any company to which the trustee may sell or transfer all o-r substantially all of its corporate trust business shall succeed to the rights and obligations of the trustee without the execution or filing of any paper or any further act, anything herein to the contrary notwithstanding, provided, that such company shall be eligible under section nine point zero two. Section nine point zero four. Compensation and indemnification. The authority shall pay or cause the community facilities district to pay the trustee such compensation, as shall be agreed in writing, for its services rendered hereunder and reimburse the trustee for reasonable expenses, disbursements, and advances, including attorney's fees and expenses, incurred by the trustee in the performance of its obligations hereunder and with respect to the local obligations. The authority agrees, to the extent permitted by law, to indemnify the trustee and its officers, directors, employees, attorneys, and agents for, and to hold it harmless against, any loss, liability, claim or expense incurred without negligence or willful misconduct on its part arising out of or in connection with i) the acceptance or administration of the trusts imposed hereby, including performance of its duties hereunder, including the costs and expenses of defending itself against any claims, whether asserted by the city or any other person, or liability in connection with the exercise or performance of any of its powers or duties hereunder, including this section nine point zero four, two) the projects to be financed with the purchase of the local obligations, three) the sale of any authority bonds or the purchase of the local obligations and the carrying out of any of the transactions contemplated by the authority bonds or the local obligations, or, four) any untrue statement of any material fact or omission to state a material fact necessary to make the statements made, in light of the circumstances under which they were made, not misleading in any official statement or other disclosure document utilized by the authority or the community facilities district in connection with the sale of the authority bonds or the local obligations. The authority's obligations hereunder with respect to indemnity of the trustee and the provision for its compensation set forth in this article shall survive and remain valid and binding notwithstanding the maturity and payment of the authority bonds, or the resignation or removal of the trustee. The trustee shall have no responsibility for or liability in connection with assuring that all of the procedures or conditions to closing set forth in the contract of purchase for the sale of the authority bonds, that all documents required to be delivered on the closing date to the parties are actually delivered, except its own responsibility to receive or deliver the proceeds of the sale, deliver the authority bonds and other certificates expressly required to be delivered by it in its council. The trustee shall not be responsible for determining or investigating whether any local obligation purchased pursuant to section five point zero three is a local obligation, as defined herein, and the trustee may conclusively rely on the authority's determination and direction in this regard, provided, that the trustee shall not acquire the local obligations other than pursuant to the provisions of section five point zero three. The trustee shall be entitled to rely conclusively on the covenants, representations, and warranties of each obligor on any local obligation and in the documents and certificates delivered in connection therewith in each written order. Section nine point zero five. Liability of trustee. The recitals of facts herein and in the authority bonds contained shall be taken as statements of the authority or the community facilities district, and the trustee does not assume any responsibility for the correctness of the same, and does not make any representations as to the validity or sufficiency hereof or of the authority bonds, and shall not incur any responsibility in respect thereof, other than in connection with the duties or obligations herein or in the authority bonds assigned to or imposed upon it, provided, that the trustee shall be responsible for its representations contained in its certificate of authentication on the authority bonds. The trustee shall not be liable in connection with the performance of its duties hereunder except for its own negligence or willful misconduct. The trustee, in its individual or any other capacity, may become the owner of authority bonds with the same rights it would have if it were not trustee hereunder, and, to the extent permitted by law, may act as depository for and permit any of its officers, directors, and employees to act as a member of, or in any other capacity with respect to, any committee formed to protect the rights of owners, whether or not such committee shall represent the owners of a majority in principal amount of the authority bonds then outstanding. The trustee shall not be liable with respect to any action taken or omitted to be taken by it in good faith in accordance with the direction of the owners of a majority in principal amount of the outstanding authority bonds relating to the time, method, and place of conducting any proceeding for any remedy available to the trustee, or exercising any trust or power conferred upon the trustee hereunder. Whether or not therein expressly so provided, every provision hereof or related documents relating to the conduct or affecting the liability of or affording or affecting the liability of or affording protection to the trustee shall be subject to the provisions of this article. Section nine point zero six. Right to rely on documents: Adverse Effect Determinations. The trustee may conclusively rely on and shall be protected in acting or refraining from acting upon any notice, resolution, requisition, request, consent, order, certificate, report, opinion, bond, or other paper or document believed by it to be genuine and to have been signed or presented by the proper party or parties. The trustee may consult with counsel of its selection, who may be counsel of or to the authority, with regard to legal questions, and the opinion of such counsel shall be full and complete authorization and protection in respect of any action taken or suffered or omitted by it hereunder in good faith and in accordance therewith. Whenever in the administration of the trusts imposed upon it hereby the trustee shall deem it necessary or desirable that a matter be proved or established prior to taking or suffering or omitting any action hereunder, such matter, unless other evidence in respect thereof be herein specifically prescribed, may be deemed to be conclusively proved and established by an officer's certificate, and such officer's certificate shall be full warrant to the trustee for any action taken or suffered or omitted in good faith under the provisions hereof in reliance upon such officer's certificate, but the trustee may, in lieu thereof, accept other evidence of such matter or may require such additional evidence as to it may seem reasonable. The trustee shall be entitled to advice of counsel of its selection and other professionals or agents concerning all matters of trust and its duty hereunder, but the trustee shall not be answerable or liable for the acts or omissions of any agent, attorney-at-law, certified public accountant, or other professional if such agent, attorney-at-law, certified public accountant, or other professional was selected by the trustee with due care. Section nine point zero seven. Preservation and Inspection of Documents. All documents received by the trustee under the provisions hereof shall be retained in its possession in accordance with its record retention policies and shall be subject at all reasonable times upon prior written notice to the inspection of the authority, the owners of not less than a majority of the aggregate principal amount of the outstanding authority bonds, and their agents and representatives duly authorized in writing, at reasonable hours and under reasonable conditions. Section nine point zero eight. Indemnity for a trustee. Before taking any action or exercising any rights or powers hereunder, the trustee may require that satisfactory indemnity be furnished to it for the reimbursement of any and all costs, claims, and expenses which it may incur and to indemnify it against any and all liability, except liability which may result from its negligence or willful misconduct, by reason of any action so taken. Article X. Execution of Instruments by Owners and Proof of Ownership of Authority Bonds. Section ten point zero one. Execution of Instruments: Proof of Ownership. Any request, direction, consent, or other instrument in writing required or permitted hereby to be signed or executed by owners may be in any number of concurrent instruments of similar tenure by different parties and may be signed or executed by such owners in person or by agent appointed by an instrument in writing. Proof of the execution of any such instrument and of the ownership of authority bonds shall be sufficient for any purpose hereof and shall be conclusive in favor of the trustee with regard to any action taken, suffered, or omitted by either of them under such instrument if made in the following manner: A. The fact and date of the execution by any person of any such instrument may be proved by the certificate of any officer in any jurisdiction who, by the laws thereof, has power to take acknowledgements within such jurisdiction, to the effect that the person signing such instrument acknowledged before him or her the execution thereof, or by an affidavit of a witness to such execution. B. The fact of the ownership of authority bonds hereunder by any owner and the serial numbers of such authority bonds and the date of his ownership of the same shall be proved by the bond register. Nothing contained in this article shall be construed as limiting the trustee to such proof, it being intended that the trustee may accept any other evidence of the matters in this article stated which shall be sufficient. Any request or consent of the owner shall bind every future owner of such authority bond and any authority bond or authority bonds issued in exchange or substitution therefore or upon the registration of transfer thereof in respect of anything done by the trustee in pursuance of such request or consent. Article eleven. Supplemental Trust Agreements. Section eleven point zero one. Supplemental Trust Agreements with Consent of Owners. Any modification or alteration hereof or of the rights and obligations of the authority, the Community Facilities District, or the owners may be made with the consent of the owners of not less than a majority in aggregate principal amount of the authority bonds then outstanding, provided, that no such modification or alteration shall be made which will reduce the percentage of aggregate principal amount of authority bonds the consent of the owners of which is required for any such modification or alteration or permit the creation by the authority or the Community Facilities District of any lien prior to or on parity with the lien hereof upon the trust estate or which will affect the times, amounts, and currency of payment of the interest on or principle of or redemption premiums, if any, on the authority bonds or affect the rights, duties, or obligations of the trustee without the consent of the party affected thereby. Section eleven point zero two. Supplemental Trust Agreements Without Consent of Owners. The authority and the Community Facilities District may, without the consent of the owners, enter into a supplemental trust agreement or supplemental trust agreements, which thereafter shall form a part of this trust agreement, for any one or more of the following purposes: A. To add to the agreements and covenants of the authority or the Community Facilities District contained herein other agreements and covenants thereafter to be observed, or to surrender any right or power herein reserved to or conferred upon the authority or the Community Facilities District, provided, that no such agreement, covenant, or surrender shall materially adversely affect the rights of any owner; B. To cure any ambiguity, to supply any omission or to cure, correct, or supplement any defect or inconsistent provisions contained herein or in any supplemental trust agreement; C. To make any change which does not materially adversely affect the rights of any owner; D. To grant to the trustee for the benefit of the owner's additional rights, remedies, powers, or authority; E. To subject hereto additional collateral or to add other agreements of the authority or the Community Facilities District; F. To modify this trust agreement or the authority bonds to permit qualification hereof under the Trust Indenture Act of nineteen thirty-nine, as amended, or any similar statute at the time in effect, or to permit the qualification of the authority bonds for sale under the securities laws of any state of the United States of America; G. To make any amendments or supplements necessary or appropriate to preserve or protect the exclusion from gross income for federal income tax purposes under the Code of the Interest on the Authority Bonds or the exemption of interest on the authority bonds from state personal income taxes, or H. To evidence the succession of a successor trustee. For all purposes of this section, the trustee shall be entitled to conclusively rely upon and shall be fully protected in relying upon an opinion of bond counsel with respect to the extent, if any, to which any action affects the rights hereunder of any owner. Section eleven point zero three. Trustee Authorized to Enter into Supplemental Trust Agreements. The trustee is hereby authorized to enter into any supplemental trust agreement with the authority and the Community Facilities District authorized or permitted by the terms hereof, and to make the further agreements and stipulations which may be therein contained, and for all purposes of this section the trustee shall be entitled to conclusively rely upon and shall be fully protected in relying upon an opinion of bond counsel to the effect that such supplemental trust agreement is authorized or permitted by the provisions hereof. Article twelve. Defeasance. Section twelve point zero one. Defeasance. If and when the authority bonds secured hereby shall become due and payable in accordance with their terms or through redemption proceedings as provided herein, or otherwise, and the whole amount of the interest on and principal of redemption premiums, if any, so due and payable upon all of the authority bonds shall have been paid, or provision shall have been made for the payment of the same, together with all other sums payable hereunder by the authority, including all fees and expenses of the trustee, then and in that case, this trust agreement and the lien created hereby shall be completely discharged and satisfied and the authority and the Community Facilities District shall be released from the respective agreements, conditions, covenants, and terms of the authority and the Community Facilities District contained herein, and the trustee shall assign and transfer all property in excess of the amounts required for the foregoing, then held by the trustee free and clear of any encumbrances as provided in Section twelve point zero four and shall execute such documents as may be reasonably required by the authority or the Community Facilities District in this regard. Notwithstanding the satisfaction and discharge hereof, those provisions of this trust agreement relating to the maturity of the authority bonds, interest payments, and dates thereof, exchange and transfer of authority bonds, replacement of mutilated, destroyed, lost, or stolen authority bonds, the safekeeping and cancellation of authority bonds, non-presentment of authority bonds, and the duties of the trustee in connection with all of the foregoing shall remain in effect and shall be binding. Upon the trustee and the owner, and the trustee shall, subject to Section thirteen point zero six, continue to be obligated to hold in trust any money or investments then held by the trustee for the payment of the interest on and principle of and redemption premiums, if any, on the authority bonds, to pay to the owner of authority bonds the funds so held by the trustee as and when such payments become due, and those provisions hereof contained in Section nine point zero four relating to the compensation and indemnification of the trustee and in Section seven point zero four relating to the tax covenants of the authority and the Community Facilities District shall remain in effect and shall be binding upon the trustee, the authority, and the Community Facilities District. Forty. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty-one sixty-eight two. Section twelve point zero two. Authority Bonds Deemed to Have Been Paid. If any money shall have been set aside and held by the trustee for the payment or redemption of any authority bonds and the interest installments therefore at the maturity thereof or date fixed for redemption, such authority bonds shall be deemed to be paid within the meaning and with the effect provided in Section twelve point zero one. Any outstanding bond shall prior to the maturity or redemption date thereof be deemed to have been paid within the meaning and with the effect expressed in Section twelve point zero one if, A. In case any authority bonds are to be redeemed on any date prior to their maturity, the authority shall have given to the trustee irrevocable instructions to mail notice of redemption of such authority bonds on such redemption date, such notice to be given in accordance with the provisions of Article four, B. There shall have been deposited with the trustee in escrow either, I, money in an amount which shall be sufficient to pay when due the interest on and principle of and redemption premiums, if any, due and to become due on such authority bonds on and prior to the date scheduled for redemption or maturity date thereof, as the case may be, or, two, non-callable government obligations the principle of and the interest on which when due, and without any reinvestment thereof, will provide money which, together with the money, if any, deposited with or held by the trustee at the same time, shall be sufficient as verified by a report of a nationally recognized independent certified public accountant to pay when due the interest on and principle of and redemption premiums, if any, due and to become due on such authority bonds on and prior to the date fixed for redemption or maturity date thereof, as the case may be, and, C., in the event any of such authority bonds are not to be redeemed within the next succeeding sixty, sixty days, the authority shall have given the trustee irrevocable instructions to mail, as soon as practicable in the same manner as a notice of redemption is mailed pursuant to Article four, a notice to the owners of such authority bonds that the deposit required by, B., above has been made with the trustee and that such authority bonds are deemed to have been paid in accordance with this section and stating the maturity dates or redemption dates upon which money is to be available for the payment of the interest on and principle of and redemption premiums, if any, on such authority bonds. Neither the securities nor money deposited with the trustee pursuant to this section nor interest or principal payments on any such securities shall be withdrawn or used for any purpose other than, and shall be held in trust for, the payment of the interest on and principle of and redemption premiums, if any, on such authority bonds, provided, that any cash received from such interest or principal or interest payments on such obligations deposited with the trustee, if not then needed for such purpose, shall, to the extent practicable and at the written direction of the authority, be reinvested in government obligations, such written direction to specify which government obligations are to be invested in, maturing at times and in amounts, together with the other money and payments with respect to government obligations then held by the trustee pursuant to this section, sufficient to pay when due the interest on and principle of and redemption premiums, if any, to become due on such authority bonds on and prior to such redemption date or maturity date thereof, as the case may be, an interest earned from such reinvestments shall, upon receipt by the trustee of a written order so directing, be paid over to the authority as received by the trustee free and clear of any trust, lien, or pledge. Forty-four. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty-one sixty-eight point two. Section twelve point zero three. Money Held for Particular Authority Bonds. Except as otherwise provided in Section twelve point zero two or thirteen point zero six, the amounts held by the trustee for the payment of the interest on or principle of or the redemption premiums, if any, or the interest due on any date with respect to particular authority bonds shall, on and after such date and pending such payment, be set aside on its books and held in trust by it solely for the owners entitled thereto. Section twelve point zero four. Effect of Defeasance of Authority Bonds. Notwithstanding any other provision hereof, in the event that the authority bonds are defeased and the obligations hereunder are discharged pursuant to this article, the trustee shall transfer all property and money held by the trustee, including, without limitation, the local obligations, to or upon the written order of the authority. Article thirteen. Miscellaneous. Section thirteen point zero one. OJ Solution of Authority. In the event of the dissolution of the authority, all the agreements, conditions, covenants, and terms contained herein by or on behalf of, or for the benefit of, the authority shall bind or inure to the benefit of the successors of the authority from time to time and any officer, board, commission, agency, or instrumentality to whom or to which any power or duty of the authority shall be transferred. Section thirteen point zero two. Partia selam teristed herein. Except as otherwise specifically provided herein, nothing contained herein, expressed or implied, is intended or shall be construed to confer upon any person other than the authority, the Community Facilities District, the trustee, and the owners any right, remedy, or claim under or by reason hereof, this trust agreement being intended to be for the sole and exclusive benefit of the authority, the Community Facilities District, the trustee, and the owners. Section thirteen point zero three. Notice. All written notices to be given hereunder to the authority or the Community Facilities District or the trustee shall be given by mail or electronic means to the party entitled thereto at its address set forth below, or at such other address as such party may provide to the other parties in writing from time to time, namely: Iftoh the Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, fifty, Natoma Street, Folsom, California, nine five six three zero attention, treasurer fax, nine one six, nine eight five, zero eight seven zero. Email, finance treasury at folsom.ca.us. Iftoh the trustee. U.S. Bank Trust Company, National Association One California Street, Suite one thousand, San Francisco, California, nine four one 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 attention, Global Corporate Trust Fax, four one five, six seven seven, three seven six nine. Email, karen.late@usbank.com. Each such notice, statement, demand, consent, approval, authorization, offer, designation, request, or other communication hereunder shall be deemed delivered to the party to whom it is addressed, A. If personally served or delivered, upon delivery, B. If given by electronic communication, upon the sender's receipt of an appropriate answer back or other written acknowledgment or confirmation of receipt of the entire notice, approval, demand, report, or other communication, C. If given by first class mail deposited with the United States Mail postage prepaid, seventy-two, seventy-two hours after such notice is deposited with the United States Mail, D. If given by overnight courier, with courier charges prepaid, twenty-four, twenty-four hours after delivery to said overnight courier, or, E. If given by any other means, upon delivery at the address specified in this section. In case, by reason of the suspension of or irregularities in regular mail service, it shall be impractical to mail to the owner's notice of any event when such notice is required to be given pursuant to any provision hereof, then any manner of giving such notice as the authority shall direct and not objected to by the trustee shall be deemed to be a sufficient giving of such notice. In case, by reason of the suspension of or irregularities in regular mail service, it shall be impractical to mail to the owner's notice of any event when such notice is required to be given pursuant to any provision hereof, then any manner of giving such notice as the authority shall direct and not objected to by the trustee shall be deemed to be a sufficient giving of such notice. The trustee shall have the right to accept and act upon instructions, including funds transfer instructions, instructions, given pursuant to this trust agreement and delivered using electronic means. Electronic means shall mean the following communications methods: email, facsimile transmission, secure electronic transmission containing applicable authorization codes, passwords, and slash or authentication keys issued by the trustee, or another method or system specified by the trustee as available for use in connection with its services hereunder, provided, however, that the authority shall provide to the trustee an incumbency certificate listing officers with the authority to provide such instructions and containing specimen signatures of such officers, which incumbency certificate shall be amended by the authority whenever a person is to be added or deleted from the listing. If the authority elects to give the trustee instructions using electronic means and the trustee in its reasonable judgment elects to act upon such instructions, the trustee's understanding of such instructions shall be deemed controlling. The community facilities district understands and agrees that the trustee cannot determine the identity of the actual sender of such instructions and that the trustee shall be entitled to conclusively presume without liability that directions that purport to have been sent by an officer listed on the incumbency certificate provided to the trustee have been sent by such officer. The authority shall be responsible for ensuring that only officers transmit such instructions to the trustee and that the authority and all officers are solely responsible to safeguard the use and confidentiality of applicable user and authorization codes, passwords, and slash or authentication keys upon receipt by the authority. The trustee shall not be liable for any losses, costs, claims, or expenses arising directly or indirectly from the trustee's reliance upon and compliance with such instructions notwithstanding the fact that such directions conflict or are inconsistent with a subsequent written instruction. The authority agrees, i), to assume all risks arising out of the use of electronic means to submit instructions to the trustee, including without limitation the risk of the trustee acting on unauthorized instructions, and the risk of interception and misuse by third parties, two, that it is fully informed of the protections and risks associated with the various methods of transmitting instructions to the trustee and that there may be more secure methods of transmitting instructions than they method, s), selected by the authority, three, that the security procedures, if any, to be followed in connection with its transmission of instructions provide to it a commercially reasonable degree of protection in light of its particular needs and circumstances, and, four, to notify the trustee in writing immediately upon learning of any compromise or unauthorized use of the security procedures. Section thirteen point zero four. Holidays. If the date for making any payment or the last date for performance of any act or the exercising of any right, as provided herein, shall not be a business day, such payment may be made or act performed or right exercised on the next succeeding business day with the same force and effect as if done on the nominal date provided in this trust agreement, and no interest shall accrue for the period from and after such nominal date. Section thirteen point zero five. Limitation of liability. The authority shall not be obligated to make any payments required hereunder or under any bond, or be deemed to incur any liability hereunder or by reason hereof or arising out of any of the transactions contemplated hereby, payable from any funds or assets other than the trust estate as provided herein. Section thirteen point zero six. Unclaimed money. Anything contained herein to the contrary notwithstanding, any money held by the trustee in trust for the payment and discharge of the interest on or principle of or redemption premiums, if any, on any bond which remains unclaimed for two, two, years after the date when such amounts have become payable, if such money was held by the trustee on such date, or for two, two, years after the date of deposit of such money if deposited with the trustee after the date such amounts have become payable, shall be paid by the trustee to the authority as its absolute property free from trust, and the trustee shall thereupon be released and discharged with respect thereto and the owners shall look only to the authority for the payment of such amounts, provided, that before being required to make any such payment to the authority, the trustee shall, at the expense and written direction of the authority, give notice by first-class mail to the owners that such money remains unclaimed and that after a date named in such notice, which date shall not be less than sixty, sixty, days after the date of giving such notice, the balance of such money then unclaimed will be returned to the authority. Section thirteen point zero seven. Governing law. This trust agreement shall be governed as to validity, construction, and performance by the laws of the state. Section thirteen point zero eight. Severability of invalid provisions. If any clause, P R O V one S ten N, or section hereof is held illegal or invalid by any court, the invalidity of such clause, provision, or section shall not affect any of the remaining clauses, provisions, or sections hereof, and this trust agreement shall be construed and enforced as if such illegal or invalid clause, provision, or section had not been contained herein. Section thirteen point zero nine. Counterparts in electronic execution. This trust agreement may be executed in any number of counterparts, each of which, when so executed and delivered, shall be an original, but all of which such counterparts shall together constitute but one and the same instrument. The exchange of copies of this trust agreement and of signature pages by facsimile or P D F transmission shall constitute effective execution and delivery of this trust agreement as to the parties hereunto and may be used in lieu of the original trust agreement and signature pages for all purposes. Each party agrees that the electronic signatures, whether digital or encrypted, of the parties included in this trust agreement are intended to authenticate this writing and to have the same force and effect as manual signatures. Electronic signature means any electronic sound, symbol, or process attached to or logically associated with a record and executed and adopted by a party with the intent to sign such record, including facsimile or email electronic signatures. Section thirteen point one zero. USA Patriot Act. The parties hereto acknowledge that in accordance with section three hundred and twenty-six of the USA Patriot Act, the trustee, like all financial institutions and in order to help fight the funding of terrorism and money laundering, is required to obtain, verify, and record information that identifies each person or legal entity that establishes a relationship or opens an account with the trustee. The parties to this trust agreement agree that they will provide the trustee with such information as it may request in order for the trustee to satisfy the requirements of the USA Patriot Act. Section thirteen point one one. Force majeure. In no event shall the trustee be responsible or liable for any failure or delay in the performance of its obligations hereunder arising out of or caused by, directly or indirectly, forces beyond its control, including, without limitation, strikes, work stoppages, accidents, acts of war or terrorism, pandemics, epidemics, quarantine restrictions, recognized public emergencies, civil or military disturbances, nuclear or natural catastrophes or acts of God, and interruptions, loss, or malfunctions of utilities, communications, or computer, software and hardware, services, it being understood that the trustee shall use reasonable efforts which are consistent with accepted practices in the banking industry to resume performance as soon as practicable under the circumstances. Remainder of page intentionally left blank. Forty-five. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty one sixty eight point two. In witness whereof, the authority has caused this trust agreement to be executed by the treasurer, the community facilities district has caused this trust agreement to be executed in its name by the Finance Director of the City of Folsom, and the trustee has caused this trust agreement to be executed by its authorized signatory, all as of the day and year first above written. Folsom Ranch Financing Authority. By underscore treasurer. City of Folsom Community Facilities District no. Twenty-three, Folsom Ranch. By Finance Director of the City of Folsom. U S Bank Trust Company, National Association. As trustee. By authorized signatory. Signature page to trust agreement. Exhibit A. Form of authority bonds. United States of America State of California. Unless this authority bond, as hereinafter defined, is presented by an authorized representative of the Depository Trust Company, a New York corporation, D D C, to the trustee for registration of transfer, exchange, or payment, and any authority bond issued is registered in the name of Seed and Co. or in such other name as is requested by an authorized representative of D T C, and any payment is made to Seed and Co. or to such other entity as is requested by an authorized representative of D D C, any transfer, pledge, or other use hereof for value, or otherwise by or to any person is wrongful inasmuch as the registered owner hereof, Seed and Co., has an interest herein. Folsom Ranch Financing Authority. City of Folsom Community Facilities District. No. Twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area no. Seven Special Tax Revenue Bond, Series twenty twenty-five. The Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, a joint exercise of powers agency established pursuant to the laws of the State of California, the authority, for value received hereby promises to pay to the registered owner specified above, or registered assigns, on the maturity date set forth above, subject to any right of prior redemption hereinafter mentioned, the principal sum set forth above and to pay interest thereon at the interest rate per annum set forth above. The interest on this authority bond will be calculated on the basis of a three sixty-day year consisting of twelve, twelve, thirty-day calendar months and will be payable on March first and September first in each year, each an interest payment date, commencing on September first, twenty twenty-five, and is a five. Forty-one forty dash zero seven two four dash sixty one sixty eight point two. Payable by check, mailed by first-class mail, on each interest payment date to the registered owner whose name appears on the bond register maintained by the Corporate Trust Office, as defined in the trust agreement hereinafter referred to, of U S Bank Trust Company, National Association, together with any successor as trustee under the trust agreement hereinafter mentioned, the trustee, as of the close of business on the fifteenth, fifteenth, day of the month preceding such interest payment date. The record date, except with respect to defaulted interest for which a special record date will be established, provided, that in the case of a registered owner of one million dollars, one million dollars, or more in aggregate principal amount of authority bonds, upon written request of such registered owner to the trustee received not later than the record date, such interest shall be paid on the interest payment date in immediately available funds by wire transfer to an account in a bank or trust company or savings bank that is a member of the Federal Reserve System and that is located in the continental United States of America. The principal hereof and the redemption premium hereon, if any, are payable upon presentation and surrender hereof at the Corporate Trust Office of the trustee. Both the interest on and principle of and redemption premium, if any, hereon are payable in lawful money of the United States of America. All capitalized terms used herein but not otherwise defined shall have the meanings contained in the hereinafter-mentioned trust agreement. The authority and the trustee shall be entitled to conclusively treat the registered owner of this authority bond as the absolute owner hereof for the purpose of receiving payment as herein provided and for all other purposes, and the authority and the trustee shall not be affected by notice to the contrary. This authority bond is one of a duly authorized issue of bonds of the authority designated as the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority City of Folsom Community Facilities District number twenty-three, Folsom Ranch, Improvement Area number seven Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five, the authority bonds, issued in the aggregate principal amount of dollars, dollar, pursuant to the provisions relating to the joint exercise of powers found in chapter five of division seven of title